Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
You three could have.
That's what I thought when you. So I wasn't.
Thank you, sir.
And plus then you get to see other shows.
Yeah, some of them are awful, but most of them are pretty good.
A friend of mine went to Jackie Little Pille.
Oh, and if you can just elevate me.
Sorry, what's that?
If you can elevate me.
Okay.
Oh, super.
So you can probably start.
Okay, lovely. Thank you. Good evening, folks. Right now, we are going to open this public hearing for the FY 2024 school budget. And we are going to open this public hearing and we're going to take a roll call vote, please.
Thanks.
Jim Knight here.
Jessica Riley here.
Michelle Kirkby here.
Leo Brem here.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brook here. Alrighty, right now it's the superintendent's budget, so it's all you, Dr. Marston.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to present our FY 24 budget on behalf of the students, teachers, and administrators here in Medfield. We're going to go through a few slides, but I always go through the important background information that kind of frames it for folks that aren't really familiar with school budgets. So the superintendent is the budget officer, and the three general areas of the responsibility for the superintendent as budget officer will be: Budget preparation, presentation, and administration. Tonight's budget is often called the superintendent's recommended budget. There's no official FY 24 budget until the school committee votes this evening. And if the budget is voted tonight, it will be submitted to the town, but certainly not necessarily the one that is the final budget that goes to town meeting. We have three full months of work ahead of us to get to that budget number that we need to get to. Changes still can be made after the school committee votes tonight, and the budget organization line item, the chart of accounts, are all assigned by DESI. So some of them are kind of weird, and you wonder why they are the way they are, but DESI requires us to do those as written. So just some important budget terms that we're going to go through this evening. So Chapter 70 funds are the state funds that the DESI in the state sends to us. It's earmarked for education. It goes directly to the town of Medfield. It does not go to the school department directly. Circuit breaker is the state reimbursement for special education. Right now, we are assuming that the reimbursement will be 75% of our special education costs. Once they go over that threshold, but there's some legislation right now that's trying to push it to 90%. And we also will get circuit breaker reimbursement for transportation as well. Collective bargaining agreements, you'll see that throughout the presentation or CBAs. That's our contracts with our teachers, our teacher assistants, our custodians, our secretaries, and our cafeteria workers. Steps, lanes, percent increase in longevity, that's the pay structure that's currently in the collective bargaining agreements. Step is a yearly increase on the salary grid. Lanes are based on the degree attainment. And the percent increase is the amount added to the base, and longevity is a bonus for time accrued in Medfield. FTE, or full-time equivalent, that's just a full-time employee, and sometimes there's a fraction of a full-time employee, which we see often in our budgets. Level service budget is same people, same programs. What you hear tonight and see tonight is almost a level service budget, fairly close to it. And then our capital budget, which there would just be a small part on that this evening, is a separate budget that is all of the items that are five years or more, typically big purchase items from the district and the town. And Michael serves on that capital budget committee for us. So the structure for this evening, go through our mission statement, our process, assumptions that we made this year, the budget drivers, the funding sources and revenue, the ESER III grant. We looked at some tax bill and per pupil data, so we got some information from meeting with some parents. And MCP folks had talked to me a little bit about the tax bills, and people new to town not understanding how that works. We wanted to make sure that we included that this year. FY 24 analysis, and then going forward, and then that one capital piece is the Dale Street Capitol, which we'll highlight some of the areas in FY 23 for Dale, and then FY 24 as well. What we don't have in here, which we've had in years past, we took out the slides that have the accomplishments and/or improvements over the last, you know, five, six, seven years. We took all that out, and we also took out all the references that we made to Medfield 2021 as we embark on our new strategic plan process this year.
Jeff.
Yeah.
I just ask Anne Mae, for people who are on Zoom, are you sharing, or could we share?
Yeah, I just reached out to Mike. Can you join the Zoom session? Do you share your screen?
Oh, so Michael, you have.
Yeah, Michael's running it.
He's running this.
Yeah, Michael's running it.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, sure. No problem.
Thank you.
So it's always important for us to frame our budget around our mission statement. So we're going to take a hard look at the mission statement this year as part of our strategic plan process. While looking at that, our vision and establishing core values for the district. So the Medfield Public School System will create a dynamic and collegial learning environment. Curriculum instruction will guide students to achieve high standards and meet the challenge of change. Through school, family, and community partnerships, students will be prepared to become responsible, sensitive, contributing citizens, and lifelong learners. So, you know, certainly a great mission statement, but we'll look at it. I'm sure some of it will stay, and maybe some of it will change. But that will be a process in which we'll go through during our strategic planning. So our process to date, Medfield Public Schools School Committee established a budget timeline. Leadership team met and established priorities for each school. Principals and department chairs developed budgets. Michael and I had 21 budget meetings with principals, department chairs to review their requests. We met again to review the budget request and get additional input. Michael and I developed the FY 24 initial budget, which we presented in December at the school committee meeting. And as we always say, that December meeting, that is the initial budget. That's the first pass of our budget. It is nowhere near, you know, what we're going to end up with in May, but it's our first pass after going through all the meetings with our staff. So the assumptions that we made going into this, that our federal entitlement grants will be level funded. You know, typically 94142 is our big one that we use for special education, assuming that will be level funded. We're not expecting to get Title I this year, but we may get that. We usually don't find that out until August. Chapter 70 will be level funded. Again, that's the state money. Continuation of expansion of our tuition-based programs. You'll see here, we talk a little bit about expanding our preschool program this year, and then our circuit breaker will be funded at 75%. And again, we've seen that as low as 42% and as high as 75% with circuit breaker. Our drivers are fairly typical for school districts. Personnel costs always make up 80-plus percent of any of the school district's budgets. Utilities this year are definitely something that we have to look at. The market projection for electricity is very, very high. We've had it as high as 64% in some projections. Our transportation, so this is the year three of our current contract with Holmes, and then except collaborative for special education. The except collaborative transportation has gone up this year. In-district positions and out-of-district placements and program development with special education. We certainly continue to commit to teacher administrative quality through professional development. And we have a change in district-wide committees. So one of the things that we've always done here is provide additional funding for research and development every summer. So we've actually taken some of that money out of that and earmarked it in to stipends for teachers because now, in our latest contract that begins this year, teachers will be paid for district-wide committees. So we took some of that R and D money and then put it in there because we couldn't do both. We couldn't afford the $50,000 R and D and pay the teachers on the district-wide committee, so we took a little bit of R and D to pay the teachers. And then, of course, technology and equipment replacement software is always a modern-day budget driver. You know, taking a look at our funding sources in our current budget, so there's three components to our budget each year. Chapter 78, which in FY 23 is 6.5 million, the local contribution at 32 million, and then our other, our grants, our tuitions and fees, which is a little over 4 million. So I always like to show this, that it's important that we don't just take the state and local money. We do try to generate our own revenue. Although the budget is 39 million, it actually costs 43 to run the district as you see it today. And it's also important to note that Medfield contributes to both Tri-County and to Norfolk-Aggie. And we typically get those assessments in a month or so, and we'll know what those are. We work with the town on that because it all depends on the amount of students that we have going to those schools. So some of the funding outside, you know, state and local federal grants are ESER money, which is ESER III, which ends in FY 24. Our tuitions, our school lunch, athletics, receipts, private grants, and circuit breaker. You know, one of the things that's really important to understand is that we fund 54 positions outside of our general budget. So 54 of our employees are paid through either revenue generation or through tuitions or any of these areas. So that's, again, that's where you see the additional positions that we've had over the years, many of them with special education. We're funding outside the budget through our grants. So taking a look at the ESER III, so some of this is in FY 23 and some of it is in FY 24. We've been fortunate that some of the projections that we put in the grant came in a little lower, so we were able to carry over money in FY 24. But you'll see, you know, probably the biggest issue in our budget that we have going forward is that the three and a half positions, FTE positions, that you see the first four there, those are all funded through ESER and FY 23, and we put them in the budget for FY 24. So that's, I mean, certainly we're committed to student well-being and wellness, and we feel really strongly that the guidance counselors at the elementary level is really important for us, so we put those in there. But that's going to be kind of the funding cliff as far as ESER III for those positions. But you look at some of the other areas that we looked at with ESER, the late bus pilot, which we've been doing with the middle school and high school, which, you know, there are some days we have lots of kids on there, and some days it's only a couple of kids. But we made the announcement again for the after-school program, intramurals that start at Blake, you know, starting next week. So hopefully we get more ridership there. But we had put $66,000 in that grant, and we had planned on having two buses. We're actually running one bus, so it's going to allow us to use the grant for FY 24 and carry that over and do it again at no cost. So we're really happy about that, doing it at no cost. Our interface referral, the $26,000, we are able to split that with the town and with Medfield Outreach. So we're able to split it with them, so we'll actually have another half to pay for the following year again. So some of these things iron out, and we've had some real good success. But again, when we're looking at 373,000, as we said before, other places got millions. So we've tried to do what we can with this money, but I think it's been a very positive allocation for us and for our kids. So I'll bring this up again, as I have numerous times in the past nine, 10 years. So another potential revenue source that we could look at for FY 24 would be bus fees. One of the things that we wanted to really look at is some of the area bus fees that we see in communities around us. Dedham, Holliston, Millis, Natick, Needham, Norwood, Walpole, and Westwood, all charging bus fees and all having a family cap that goes along with that. So Dover Sherburne can't do that because they're a regional district, and regional districts cannot charge bus fees. But other than, I think, Medway and Medfield were the only ones in the area that do not charge a bus fee. So one of the things we looked at was trying to see, you're only required by law to bus students K to six. Now, no one just buses kids K to six. Everyone buses kids K to 12. But what this allows us to do is be able to charge a fee for all students, grades seven through 12. And when we did the projections on that for 200 per student, it looks like about $112,000. And that's looking at the fact that a lot of 11th and 12th grade kids don't take the bus. We factored all of that in and did that. So that's something that could be implemented at the start of the school year. And it gets a little tricky with elementary because now we're looking at distance house to the school. And because all of our kids, we don't have neighborhood schools, and our kids go through all the schools, it will create kind of an issue around that, so we have to look at that a little more closely. But, you know, I just want to bring this up as another revenue source that we could look at as a district. It would cut our increase to our transportation on the yellow buses, big yellow buses, in half. It would be something where we would be able to, if we did it for a few years, bank some of that, and then it would pay off the increase as we go forward. So it's a good way of doing it. I know that when I was in my former district, we implemented that. I know Michael and his former district implemented that as well. So it's something that we can look at as a revenue source. Again, I'm just throwing it out there. I know it needs a lot of conversation. You guys need to decide that. But I want to just put it up there as something to consider in FY 24. So some of the recent revenue generated for the town of Medfield. Our feasibility reimbursement for MSBA is finalized. So last year, the town got $398,000 out of the $1 million. And then additionally, this year, we got $24,000, so that's closed out. So that the town got over, you know, $420,000, give or take, out of the million that was spent on that feasibility study. And hopefully we'll be able to use a lot of that information as we move forward with the project. Medicaid reimbursement from July 1 to now, $42,000. And that's only money that we can generate as a school district, and that goes right into the town's general fund. In the last couple of years, we've done budget turnbacks that have equaled together $213,000. So that goes right back to the town general fund as well. So looking at, again, some of the information that parents had shared with me, and we're talking about tax bills and what that looks like in Medfield compared to other communities. So if you look at the single home tax bill for FY 23, you see Dover and Sherburne are at the top. They're actually in the top 10 of the state, those two communities. And you have Norwood down there at $6,223. So Medfield's right smack in the middle of that, certainly a lot higher than a lot of communities, but not as high as some. Next one. So then you look at the per pupil expenditure, and you see where we fall with those same communities, and we fall near the bottom of those same communities at $18,435. So again, we're not at state average for per pupil expenditure. We never have in this town. We've definitely made some strides in that. But we're still, even though we're at the middle of the pack with the single tax rate, we're at the bottom of the pack with our per pupil for these same communities. And you'll see that Dedham, for instance, Dedham's a good example to talk about because even though the town is, you know, probably twice the size population-wise, the school district is the same size as Medfield as far as the number of students in enrollment, yet their budget's 10 million more than us. So look at their per pupil is at $24,000, so $6,000 more per kid in Dedham per pupil expenditure. Just some data that people had talked to me about that we wanted to kind of get out there and have conversations about. So ours is 18.4, the state average is 19. So if we were to spend the state average, our budget actually request would increase over $6 million. So we'd be closer to what, you know, what Dedham is spending in that area. But we certainly are not going to be asking for an additional $6 million. But it puts it in perspective. It's real data. The per pupil is apples to apples to school districts. It's everything that's spent in the end-of-the-year report, and that's how they calculate it. So looking at our budget analysis for FY 24, we're going to go through the summaries of each area and then the summaries per building. And you'll see some of the increases and decreases based on what we have for each department. So student services is the first one, and you'll see that there's a minus 2.6% decrease. Now, I know in other meetings, I've talked about how out-of-district placements, private placements are going up 14% this year. And that is a huge issue for many communities. Was at a meeting yesterday where some communities were 2 million in the hole just because of that. In our case, we have students who are aging out of out-of-district that were taking off the role for out-of-district placement, which is saving us the money on that end. So the 14% is not going to impact us as much. In fact, we're going to be minus 2.6% in that area. District services up 5.4, and then policy. District Services up 5.4, and then Policy Administration up 2%. Let's look at these a little bit more closely. So, our out-of-district tuition at 822 is definitely a decrease from what we've had in years past. You'll see that there's pretty, pretty standard in terms of tutoring that we have for students, the summer school, the testing and screening, all of those typical costs, but we want to see, I want to point your attention to the transportation, which is going up this year by 140, Michael, 140,000 in our special education transportation, and that's based on the projections from Accept at this point. So, that could change, it could go a little bit higher, it could go a little lower, but at this point, that's the projection that they're giving us. But all in all, for Student Services, it's minus 2.6. Our District Services, pretty clear-cut there. One of the things that we have, that I want to mention, the research and development, that's always been 50,000, and that's where we took the 20,000 out of that and moved it into stipends for the teachers for, excuse me, for their, their district-wide committees. So, we also have money in there for degrees change and course reimbursement, as you know. Unit A, when they get different degrees, they can move horizontal on the pay scale, so we have money placed in for that. The sick leave buyback for teachers that retire, all that is in there in our, at the very bottom. Take a look at what we're spending next year for our big yellow buses, 1.5 million. So, again, I just want to highlight that fees could really help that out as we move forward, because it's not going to get any cheaper. One of those, there's a percent increase in that transportation, but there's also a fuel escalator in that, because the cost has gone up so much in fuel. Our Policy Administration, our General Reserve, which is the increases for all non-union employees, our legal costs at 55,000, that is special education legal and also general legal as well. I always like to highlight the fact that we pay rent and utilities at Town Hall for Central Office, so that's $30,000. And our memberships for Tech and Accept in our district-wide PD, and Tech Department and textbooks. Again, this is the way that Desi wants us to organize it, that's why it organized the way it is under Policy Administration. So, looking at a summary by school, again, if we know that 80% of our school budget is based on staffing, you'll see the changes are based on what staffing changes are going to be in terms of where they go on the pay scale. So, it's not that we like Medfield High better at 6.7 than we do Blake at 2.8, it's based on the staff. That's what it's based on, what they're doing in terms of their, their scale and where they're going horizontally or vertically. So, looking at Memorial first, 8.3% increase, you'll see that the increase mostly is going to be in the Unit A staff in the payroll. Supplies, Utilities, excuse me, Supplies are almost all level-funded in the district. If you look at the line-by-line, you'll see there's definitely some that aren't level-funded, but for the most part, we're all level-funded in there. And then Utilities at 158, again, going up at Memorial, and Memorial's a small school compared to the high school. You'll see when we get to the high school that we're budgeting over $300,000 just for electricity at Medfield High School. Looking at Wheelock, you know, similar number of staff there, increase at 6.3%. Looking at Dale Street, again, similar number of staff in those three buildings, 7%. Middle School, larger staff, Unit A alone is 6.7 million there compared to the 3 million that we saw in the, in the elementary schools, but you'll see the change is only at 2.8, and again, based on where the staff are. High School, our biggest staff, 8.2 million at the high school. In our Supplies, Utilities, 470,000 at the high school. Clearly, this is the biggest building that we have, also one that's used the most. It's, it's almost going 24/7 around here. So, certainly, we have electricity, and that's why we've, we've talked to the Energy Committee and looking at doing some solar stuff at the high school and at the middle school because of the electricity costs in both those buildings. So, our total at this point, our request is 41,472,917, a change of 1.9 million or 4.98, which is different than December. December was the 5.65 number. We continue to work to reduce that, to get it to a manageable number that we can, the town, we know the town can afford and support. But at this point, right now, three months away from Town Meeting, again, just to remember, it's three months away with a lot of work to do, we're at 4.98%. So, what does that 4.98% budget do for us? Maintains our current staff and programs and fulfills all of our obligations to our collective bargaining agreements. And, you know, we've, we've done them all in the last couple of years, our teacher Unit A, our teacher Unit B, administrative assistants, custodians, and food service. As you remember, we did a four-year agreement with Unit A, so we did a one-year extension for this current year, and then the new three-year contract starts July 1. It adds the 3.5 positions that were funded by ESER, and then creates another pre-school section at Wheelock, and we'll have a tuition offset for that, of course, but we'll have to absorb a little bit of that with staffing. Increases our supplies by 34,000, which isn't, isn't very much, because that's pretty much all level-funded. Utilizes ESER funds to purchase a new K-5 math program, so we had $40,000 in the budget for textbooks, and then we have additional money allocated. We're still in the phase of the pilot, so we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but again, we have three months before Town Meeting, we'll be able to have that all squared away before we get to the final, and we'll bring that information to you, obviously, because you folks have to approve that. Transportation is up at 257, and that's both, that's not just our big yellow buses, also our other transportation. We have a decrease of 243 in our out-of-district. Utilities increased by 169, and our technology equipment increases by 25. So, in years past, we've seen a long list on that, in other years, we've had just a couple of things when it's been a true level-service budget. So, looking at the increases and how they all play out, so teacher steps, lanes, increases in longevity at 1.2 million increase, there's those positions that we looked at that were in ESER. The teacher assistant Unit B and their contract increase, other staff, their steps and increase. Tuitions was the, again, the minus 243, and special education services increase was at And then our other district services, our Supplies and Services at 29, Utilities, again, at 169, Tech Equipment at 24, and our Transportation at 256. So, you'll see the distribution, this is always a great visual to kind of see what it looks like budget-wise, and you'll see that Memorial and Wheelock and Dale are very similar in their pie piece, and then it gets a little bit bigger at Blake, and really bigger at the high school, and then our District Services and our Administration fill in the rest. But it gives you a good sense of what it looks like and how it's broken out. So, every year, we have positions that are requested, and they don't make it into this first round. Certainly, if the school committee feels strongly about any or all of these, they can put them in and take something else out, that's their purview at this point, once you accept it. So, a building sub at, at Blake Middle School, a reading specialist that would be split between Dale and Blake at 1.5, Guidance Counselor at Dale, General Aid at Dale, 0.5 Teaching Assistant, 1 EL at Memorial, a General Aid at Wheelock, and Instructional Coaches. Instructional Coaches and DEI were the two that did not come from the principals in their requests. So, the Instructional Coaches is something that educationally, a lot of districts, if not most that I know, have those positions, and those are positions that, if we had one in each building, they would work with teachers, working with them, looking at data, working with them, modeling lessons, and, and supporting them in a way that's nonevaluated. So, it's really important to, to have those kinds of positions, and I think we're going to get there at some point, but I think the principals would agree that, that's something that they would want to help out with the, the teaching and learning and instruction learning that they do and the supervision. I, I can't think, quite frankly, of a district around here that doesn't have these positions. And it's really looking at, not working with kids, it's working with teachers exclusively. So, if I were to, you always ask me, what do I put in there? That would be something that would go in there very quickly, along with a 0.5 DEI Director. We're not ready for that yet, but the reason why it's a 0.5 is because we were working with another district to split a position to work with us and the other district. They're not ready yet, they're having some budget issues at this point, but it's something, I just want to make sure it's on our radar, that we keep out there, that it's important to the work that we're doing, and someone to coordinate that work would be really, really helpful. Again, I would say the same districts that have those Instructional Coaches have a DEI Director as well. And most of them are Metco districts, so that sometimes it doubles as a Metco Director and a DEI Director, so they do half and half, not all, but some of them are like that. But I would, I just think it's important to keep that up there and, and really focus on the fact that those two key positions, the six, the 5.5 key positions up there, I think, are something that we would look to in the, in the future. One, to improve instruction and learning for kids, and one, to coordinate and keep on that important work that we have with diversity, equity, inclusion. So, going forward, we have school committees, school committee meetings in February, March, and April, which we'll be talking about this in any direction that you want me to go as far as the budget to change or add or delete. We have a warrant committee meeting scheduled for March 14, and of course, the final budget is voted at Town Meeting on May 3. So, we do have three full months to do this work and make some of the refinements that you folks think are important and what the community thinks are important. One thing I want to just talk about quickly, because I know it comes up and it's of community interest with Dale Street, and the fact that we did not have a project pass, one of the things that folks were concerned about is, okay, my kids just have to still go to that school, what are you doing? So, we, we've had some projects this past year in FY '23 to make some improvements to Dale Street, and we have some scheduled for FY '24 as well. So, we did some duck cleaning throughout the entire school, and that was a $10,000 job. We've done some ceiling tile replacement. We originally had 50,000 in there, but the town reduced that number in our capital budget, so we only could do a couple of classrooms, we couldn't do as many as we wanted to. One thing that was really important to us that we had to get done, because it was a safety issue for everyone, was the inside door locks replacement. So, we had locks that, keys that didn't work, locks that didn't lock, they locked and then they broke because the hardware was so old. So, we had that all redone this year, so that all of the classrooms can be locked in a way, and one key opens them, it's been all rekeyed. So, that was an important thing for us to make sure we did. The asbestos flooring abatement replacement was something that we did in the main hallway that goes from the main part of the building over to the gymnasium, that area, that's all been redone. And that's expensive, of course, because of the abatement of the asbestos, that takes some time to do that. And then the front portago repair, the white columns, you know, that was kind of a neat project that they did this summer. Who knew there were strips of wood that made up that? It was really neat to see those guys do that, and we got a chance to see, see them and talk to them about, about that and the amount of repair that really needed to be done there, but we just did the $90,000 version. Michael, you remember what the, the first version was? Was it 150? Was it more than that?
It was 250.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot more than that. So, that was cut down by the town as well, so we did the 90,000 there. So, that was this, this fiscal year. Next year, we're looking at the same thing with more flooring and abatement and replacement within the school. One thing that we need to get rid of is the gym and auditorium curtain, just to take that out and replace it around $30,000. We have to design a fire alarm replacement in that building, which, you know, that's, hate to do something like that with a building that hopefully, you're not going to have forever, but I think we need to, I mean, it's a safety issue, we have to do it. We have to replace the one in the high school as well this year, that's going to be in our capital. We did the middle school a couple of years ago, so they're all aging out. You know, the high school and middle school, when they flipped, the roofs stayed the same, and the, and the guts of the alarms all stayed the same, so those are just kind of aging out right now. And then we'll do additional ceiling tile replacement as well in the Dale Street, because that's an ongoing project. And that was our thought, that if our kids and our staff are going to be in there for X amount more years, we need to keep the upgrade, keep it going, because that's really important to make sure they have a safe building and a, and a good building to be in, even though it's not certainly what folks wanted. Yes?
Can you quickly explain, because I, I know kind of what's happening with the gym and the auditorium curtain, but can you kind of quickly explain the, the real danger around that, that curtain?
Yeah, it's an asbestos curtain.
It's an asbestos curtain, and there's also, is there a, essentially like a firewall that, like?
So, they're all, yeah, and they're all fireproof, right? That's the code at the time or whatever, but we, what we need to do is, before that starts becoming an issue, we need to just get rid of it. So, it's, it's like everything else with asbestos, you need to take all the precautions and everything that you need to do, so that's obviously a summertime job that we'll do. We want to make sure that we get that done, but that's, that's the real reason why, it's just an old, old asbestos curtain.
I think a lot of the time, people don't know that those are almost entirely asbestos and that they were meant for, you know, what, 1940, kind of fire suppression.
Jess, can you try and speak into the mic?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just.
Fire suppression, bad thing with the asbestos. That's, sorry.
I'll just, I'll speak into the mic, too. You say asbestos curtain, that's a term I'm not familiar with, but is there risk today? Like, between now and summer?
So, so we have a, a plan, a HARA plan that we have to do, where the state comes in and they tell us what we have to do for certain things. They, in their last, their last go-around in inspection, they, they recommend it to us that we get rid of it. So, they've known about it, it's always been on our report forever, but they recommend that it's time to, to get rid of it.
I'm more just, like, oversimplifying, a kid's hanging around on that stage and rolling in and bouncing off and on it.
Yeah, no, I hear you, yeah. I mean, it's something that, you know, again, the state's been aware of, and they've inspected that, and they just think it's time to, that's their recommendation to get rid of it.
Yeah, no, part of me is just, I'm just saying that if, if there's risk today, that's what my question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, Michael, I don't know if you want to add anything, but they've been, they've looked at that, every couple of years, they come through and look at it, so.
Then they give us a list of items that they would like to see us take care of within the next three years. So, even in the capital budget, you know, one of the first things we look at is what's on that list, and what can be, you know, abated in the next three years, right, to, to address those issues, such as, you know, the floor tiles at Dale, you know, that was on the list, it's on here. So, certain things that you see on the capital is because they come on a list that is reported to the state.
And that's not a replacement, it's simply a removal, right?
Just a removal.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Happy to answer any questions that you have. I think that's our last slide.
I did have a quick question about the, the reduction in Student Services, and that $82,000 is, and I, I know that you, you and Ms. Brule have, have, I'm sure, put some wiggle room into this, but $82,000 is really only one significant day placement, right, in terms of tuition? So, is that something that we've planned?
So, where's it, where, what is the 82 you're talking?
You're talking about that we've reduced the Student Services budget by approximately 82,000 or 2.6%? Or was it 86?
You got to it. The real, the money savings, the savings for the out-of-district tuition is over 200,000.
Okay, so that we do have some room in there.
Absolutely, you have to.
For the surprises that happen.
Well, the thing is, I mean, and that's usually what we see with the, from now until, until May, some of the changes that happen, is that we'll see adjustments made in the special education budget, I mean, it happens every year. So, I suspect it will happen again this year as well, but this is the recommended budget on January 26, so it'll, it'll change.
Yep.
No doubt about it.
And I think it's also interesting for people to know, really, how much an out-of-district placement costs, particularly if the tuition, the tuition increases by 14% this year, which is essentially a mandate across the board for 766 schools.
No choice.
Hasn't been increased enough over time, and we really have to make up that, that jump.
Two to 3% a year typically, right?
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, it's the districts that need to kind of eat that to serve our kids the best, and I know that we've done our best to make that happen.
And one of the hopes that we have is that Governor Healy will put that in her budget, so we're looking at trying to, the superintendents are, are working with legislators, trying to get some sort of pothole where, a one-time in the budget where it'll offset these costs, the 14%, you know, at least for FY '24. We'll know on March 2 whether it's in her budget or not.
Okay, great.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions, please. So, um, so the original budget you presented was 5.65, and now it's 4.98. What were the main drivers in terms of, of reducing it thus far? Is it retirements, sharpening fences?
From now until then, knowledge about special education in terms of aging out, those kinds of things, that, that helped things. We looked at, looking at, we haven't looked at any of the staffing at the high school or any of that yet, we haven't done any of that work.
Okay, that was another question.
It's, it's just too early to do that right now.
Yep.
But that's something that we would look at as well, based on enrollment, and we're just, we're just not. just, we're just not there yet.
Okay.
You know, kids have to pick their schedules, and we have to see what course is going to be offered and all this, so we're not at that point. But, you know, the cuts in special education, looking at other staffing reductions, some of the technology that we looked at that is part of capital that we could take out of operating, all those areas we kind of whittled down. And then, then looking at, in that first round, we didn't have all of the, all of our expenses level funded. We made that change between December and now, so mostly everything's level funded.
Okay. Do you know about retirements? When does that normally happen?
We do, the retirements are factored into this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed some, I didn't know if there was, is there normally some, a deadline for it?
There is, but, you know, we don't hold people to it if they want to.
Yes, yes.
If they want to retire. It's really just for planning purposes, so there is contractual requirements on that, but folks have retired after that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And very high level, if we were to, and I know we've talked about bus fees, every year it seems to be.
Yeah, it feels like it.
But if we truly want to explore it, and I know that you mentioned you did it in a district, Michael did it in Deta, what would be the steps to go about in terms of the deep dive of, you know, informing the community, getting their feedback, et cetera?
Yeah, so I think what we'd have to do is really get a little closer in what the revenue would actually be if we had elementary in there, and actually looking at each kid, how far away they live from the school that particular year and projecting out that way, which we've always talked about, that you could be a family that has a child in Wheelock and a child in Memorial, and you're paying for one and not the other based on the proximity where you live to the school, right? So I think going through all of that, running some scenarios, and just trying to see what the real cost would be, bring that, folks, to you. I think you want to have a public hearing on something like that in a public forum, you want to kind of get feedback from people.
Good.
You know, that's probably the highest-attended school committee meeting I had in Rentham was that, you know. So give people an opportunity to, you know, talk about it, they want to know the why from us, why it's important. I think if people understand the why, then, you know, they're more apt to understand why, you know, the reasons for doing it, it's when they don't know the why that, you know, we start to see all the stuff happen.
Okay, thank you.
Is there some possibility in the future, or even now, of taking some part of that and offsetting even a small amount of that towards being able to make the late afternoon bus a sustainable program, which would probably also need to have fees at that point anyway?
Yeah, it would have to be...
If we're charging for general education, we'll need to charge for that, but...
Yeah, FY25 would have to be fees, I think, right? I think that's going to be part of it, so if we, once we go through this year and then FY24 with the late bus, at that point, we'd have to establish, you would have to establish what the fee would be if we want to continue the program, so that'd be a part of it as well, you know.
All right.
Unless you want to absorb that cost into the budget, or, you know, as part of the next contract for busing. You could always do that as well, you could write in the contract specs that you would want a late bus, you know, and that would be part of the budget instead of charging folks that.
So many other things I'd rather absorb into the budget?
No, I understand, it just, you know...
Kindergarten. You know.
We got some time to talk about that one, too, for sure.
Any other questions from the school committee members?
Sorry, you said that preschool, we do, we are going to be adding an additional preschool class?
Right.
And how is that going to work, and what are we looking at there?
So we're going to be looking at a four-day, full-time preschool, and that's going to be in a, one of the first-floor classroom at Wheelock that has a bathroom. We're going to, once we, once it's ready to roll, we're going to present this all to you and go through it, but, so that's, we'd have revenue generation from the tuitions, and we have to just make sure that we have the teaching assistants and the teachers to be part of that as well. So some of that would be offset by, it's really a need, right? So we've had this, we've had this waiting list going for years on this. And the other option is, is to go to the town for a few hundred thousand dollars and put modules on Memorial. So that doesn't seem like a great idea right now, but we want to make sure we can get this additional preschool in to get our kids in here.
So how many students are you talking for this class?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Yeah, but there would be, is it eight or seven, Missy? Special education? Seven? So it'd be seven special education and eight general education kids in there.
And we have the space at Wheelock, is what you're saying?
We do.
Okay.
Would that be the only full day?
No, there'd be one, there'd be one at Memorial. Yeah, there'd be a second one.
There would be a second one at Memorial?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is bringing an additional 15 kids in that aren't able to, that weren't able to get off the waitlist this year?
Right.
Correct, I got it.
And Missy and Hall have been meeting about it, and Mary, and kind of going through some of the logistics, because there's just logistical things we got to work out, but it's, you know, you think about how many school districts have preschools in their high school, I mean, it happens all the time.
Yeah.
But, you know, we can't wait another year, maybe we'll get a module in next year, maybe we'll get one the year after. You know, these kids have preschool for a couple of years, we need to get them in and do that program.
I have two follow-ups. Just one on the bus fee, if we were to, you know, pursue that more diligently, do you at least have a range, what it would be going like pre-K through, for the additional, pre-K through six?
For a cost?
For revenue?
Yeah, see, I see the 112 for seven. Yeah, so we, we don't have that yet, because we have to actually map out where people live and see whether we can charge them or not. So that's kind of a bigger process.
We would only be doing K, right?
I'm sorry?
K through, not pre-K through?
K.
Okay.
Yeah, K through. So we have to go through that whole process to map out.
So full-day kindergarten parents would pay tuition and potentially a bus fee?
Potentially.
And, tell me if we're okay. The other question was just on the instructional coaches. I like the idea, because it's kind of like, you know, raise the tide of everybody. I'm more curious, it's always, it almost looks like the trade-off of that or an FTE, you know, an FTE dedicated, but have we ever thought of like a pilot for it, or have you, we don't, I don't think we have any of them in today, I just better understand how that would work.
So one of the models that doesn't work great is if you have someone that is, whether it's a reading specialist or a math specialist, and you have their time split working with kids and with teachers, it just doesn't work out well. It's got to be one or the other in these positions, so that folks can dedicate their time working with it. So we have, we've allocated our folks to work with kids, and that's what we've done. But we need to, you know, give the teachers some support as well, and that would be the model we would choose, is to have some. So as far as a pilot team, I think we'd be open to that, but there's a cost associated with that, we'd have to hire someone to do that, and that's a full-time FTE to, you know, equivalent to do that. So we'd have to either move something away or move something around in the budget to facilitate that.
And are there any, like, that's almost a question for the principals, too, sometimes, is there anyone who's real excited about it, like, hey, I'd love to do that?
Oh, I bet. I bet there's some folks who would love to do it. And they'd be great at it, too. I mean, that's the thing, I mean, you got to have someone that can really, really do a great job in the classroom, understands what teachers need, is able to model that great instruction, we have folks in the district that could do that 100%.
And to me, it's also something that could be, again, that you look at the staff that you have, and it could be a trade-off.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that we could still consider with these numbers, it would just be more...
It's only money, Tim.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's a matter of allocation.
Right, yeah, sure.
Where do you get more, you know, where do we get more benefits and lift?
And we also don't have to do it all at once, you know, if we're looking at new curriculum for math, perhaps that's a time where instructional, you know, budgeting in, the instructional coach would be most critical within that population, so that that can be kind of working with people and kind of bringing that up, and then integrating it into that culture, then moving on. And these are things that you already think about, it's not like we're doing anything original, but...
But I would think at the elementary level, it wouldn't just be a math person, it would be instructional coach for everything.
For everything, but there's...
But it would, definitely would support the implementation, for sure.
So then from the DEI coordinator standpoint, the half-position role, so the collabs that we belong to are Except and Tech, correct? Have we talked to the executive directors at all about utilizing a DEI coordinator that could be shared through a collab with multiple schools in that sense?
So the Tech Collaborative has an interim person right now, and that's who I would think would do that. So their new person is starting on July 1, so that's a conversation we're definitely going to look at.
Okay, so there is potential for...
Because I know there's a model out there that does that.
Right, so there is potential then for a DEI coordinator to start working with Medfield schools, but not particularly coming straight from our budget, but coming through the money that we pay towards that collab?
No, we'd have to, we'd have to allocate money to that.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, there's a couple of ways you could do that, you could allocate money for it from your budget, or it could be, if there is, if they have X amount over what their budget is, they have to give it back to the district, you can roll that into a position, do it that way.
Okay.
So we've done that with professional development in years past, it all depends, but I think, you know, the new person will, would be open to that.
Okay, so, just so I can explain to kind of Joe Public what we're talking about, Michelle and I both attended a session at the MAS C conference that spoke very specifically about philosophically, do you want a DEI coordinator at the head of your school as a district top position, or is it more useful and better philosophically in the long run to have somebody who is an extremely informed, focused on your district person who enables your entire district to coordinate and integrate DEI principles without being the figurehead for it, so that it essentially puts the responsibility on you as a district, every person within that district, as opposed to a figurehead who kind of hands down DEI principles, hands, you know, becomes the teacher, which in some, in some views makes it less likely that the district will take on its, or individual people will take on the responsibility of truly integrating that into the culture. So that was kind of one of the things that we had seen, and it's not used many places, but I think as DEI work starts to evolve, the models that we've had in place previously may also evolve with it in terms of how we begin to understand these goals and what we need to do as a school to do it, so.
In her district, currently she has a DEI person, so she understands this and probably willing to do that.
Jess, I want to make sure, completely false, I saw a couple of models at the conference, one is a district has a DEI, FTE.
Yep.
Kind of like the way we do with SEL. Another is more shared.
It's shared, but also less that this person is a 50% DEI coordinator, it's that this person is essentially a 50% what I would call an instructional coach.
Yeah.
Around truly inserting DEI...
DEI philosophies and principles into ingraining into that.
Into, and doing trainings, but not, but then not placing that figurehead position of one person who is responsible for putting these things in, but truly working with the district to incorporate them throughout, so that it becomes...
Like a consulting.
Yeah, well, like I saw, like, I think it was Everett, wasn't it? Everett had an FTE.
Right, right.
Who was embedding it in the framework of everything they do.
Right, this is one of the, one of the collabs north of Boston.
Yeah, I don't think you would...
Shared.
Yeah, I would say...
They had eight different schools that were, that worked with this specific collab, and they had one...
And there were three of them who were participating in this, I don't think all eight of them were working with her, it was like three of them.
I thought there was eight, yeah. There was, yeah, there was quite a few of them, though, that had very diverse schools and needs, and she was able to coach and work with each district.
Right.
But by bringing in different types of trainings to the schools, and yeah, I mean, kind of implementing these different philosophies and practices, but she wasn't necessarily like the person for the district they would know about, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, it was more like just the work was starting to happen in that space, but from a cost model...
So this is a much longer discussion.
Yeah, it is.
This is kind of how, you know, that there is this work out there, we need to be looking towards it, but there's going to be a lot of different models that happen over time, and I think that that'll start to flesh itself out, once we get to our strategic plan and we're able to figure out where that comes from and what we're doing there.
Very good. Any other comments, questions from school committee members before I open it up? Okay, so, Tim, do you mind checking out Zoom? And I open up the microphone for public comment now.
And on Zoom, just raise your hand.
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you. Raise your hand, and you'll be popped over and have your camera on, please.
It's about 7th Street, um, just to check how many people are on Zoom.
Um, Tim, how many people are on Zoom?
Fourteen at the last minute.
Fourteen, okay.
Great, thank you. I just had a few questions. We had allocated, as tacteters, three years of costs for Mass Association School Committee policy services, virtual worth $10,500, and we do not have an online director yet with them, and we still have unbroken policy review taking place and updates. So my question is, what is the additional cost to Mass Association School Committees, and is that reflected in the budget?
There's no additional cost. There's no additional cost, nothing. Already paid.
That was a contract that, the work, however it happens, we paid it over three years, because that was how they knew it would be easiest for this district or other districts to absorb it, but it is an ongoing process.
It's a flat fee for the project.
Additional cost to that.
I just know that the contract, they had an end date in their contract, it's well well past.
Yeah, so, you know...
So there's some information, you've been in the meetings, and we were going to update, I think, on it. The process is ongoing, it was a three-year period, there was a global pandemic, and there was an enormous amount of focus on keeping the doors open. When we did, you know, we recognized how much effort goes into that process, and is, where is our time best spent during that period? To be honest, we met with them during that three-year period, and they were also very stretched, the MAS C was, with the, for the same reasons we were. The process that Jim Hardy has laid out for us this time around was a lot more obtainable. There was a great deal more direction, I don't, he said there was some resources that we needed, you know, if we could do it, again, we would have had allocated to follow this process.
There was some personnel changes.
Yeah, so he has also, like, yeah, we did not hit the end, at the end of the three-year period. Heck, we could have pushed everything in to rush policy, and I think, you know, I've heard from many folks in the community who say, that's probably not a great idea. So the upside, I think, for all of us is, we are still getting the services from Mass, MAS C, to help us through that process. And, you know, I personally, because I, I wanted to see us get it through, but I was getting lost in it as well, so I, stay tuned, you know, I know, I think it's next Tuesday, we have, we had to cancel on the 14th, but we do have at least a process where we hope we can get through it in the, I would say, nine to 12-month period.
Yeah, I completely am, my basic question was, you're basically just saying that Mass Association School Committee is just accommodating us under the current contract with an extended timeline? That's all I...
That's, that's the way, yeah.
And we're accommodating them, right? So it's a mutual...
It's not like they're going to, they're not going to issue us another bill.
No.
Nope, I think we've been pretty clear about that, yeah.
They're not always trying to get additional...
Yeah, and they do, you can see it, they're, I think there's a mutual desire to get the manual digitized.
And I'm in total agreement that we're not rushing the process.
So, yeah, so it's comforting that it's not like we're getting dinged, you know, hey, we didn't get through it, and I, I don't think we're the only school who...
No. In fact, many districts that I have spoken to consider this one of the most onerous and overwhelming processes that they've ever gone through, and not many of them have accomplished it in three years without a pandemic, so it takes a lot of time.
Yeah, it takes a lot of time. The cost, I'm curious about the cost for grade school at Wheelock. Because, you know, during the Dale Street Project, when we, you know, suggestions were being thrown out from various members of the community about, you know, putting this grade over here, putting this grade over there, the response that we often got was, well, Memorial, for example, is not suited for that particular age group. So my question is, at Wheelock, you know, that is a school for grades two to three. And so I would think that for three-year-olds, there's going to be some kind of need for a facility combination. So I'm curious about where that cost is reflected or something like that. And then I also just want to issue a little bit of a word precaution because this, this reference to a waitlist. You know, I remember when I was looking for daycare at, at, when everybody in the world was waiting for daycare. And we would stand in line and we would put our names in, 10 paper, you know, to get a slide, 10 preschools to get a slide. So I would just suggest that maybe reach out to some of the parents who did not get into the program to say, "How quickly did you get a slide?" Because they may have been one of, you know, 20 people that put their name into the programs. And that was not, may not have been their first choice. They were just doing backup.
No, I don't want to take any of your time, but I was personally number 24 last year and I never got off the waitlist.
But I mean, that's just, that's just one example. That's just one data point. That's one person. So I'm just saying that before you go and go through this process of thinking that, oh, it's, and you're going to fill a whole, another, just a little bit more thing, and also the security cost is going to be for doing it at Wheelock.
So in terms of facility, the, the classroom, if you remember, before we did the configuration we have now, do you remember that when Wheelock was a neighborhood school? Okay, and it was, I.
Personally remember.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have a story.
Okay. So the actual classroom that's going to be used is a former kindergarten classroom, so it has the size, it has the bathroom at that level. So it's going to be fine, fine. So the facility issue is not even there. In terms of the cost, it's really looking at staffing. So you have a teacher and two assistants. So we're looking at projections now for what we're going to set the tuition at and whether or not we fill eight positions or seven positions or whatever. That's what we're working on right now. Again, we have many months before town meeting. But we feel like it's important. I know Missy has done a lot of outreach with parents, so we get a pretty good idea of who wants to come and who doesn't. So I think we're pretty comfortable with what we're doing so far. But thanks for the help.
And then the only other question I had was, I noticed on the budget that there was, I, I'm not certain on my interpretation abbreviation, so if you could please correct me along. I'm assuming it was the Dale Foreign Language.
What line item was it?
It just said doubled at Dale from four thousand to eight thousand.
We put the line items there so it's easier to kind of figure it out when we're doing this. Let me take a look. So we went from 4,000 to 8,000 and it's Dale Foreign Language.
Well, if you tell me what the code is for Dale Foreign Language, I could like.
I, I, because I do it by the number line item. That's how I do it, so.
Perhaps you could send an email later.
What's that?
Perhaps an email could be sent later.
Sure, I could, I could do that. But let me just take a quick look with my glasses here. Michael, if you find it first, let me know.
I, I can answer that, Jeff, because I have the paperwork. The director, or I should say the head of the department is doing some curriculum change and is asked to increase that budget for that reason.
Was it for the back foreign language?
It was for, I believe, Mandarin at the Dale Street School.
So it's in support, Michael, that's in support of the effort for foreign language? Yeah. So it's in support.
Thank you. Does someone mind checking Zoom to see if we have any raised hands, folks to pop over?
Yes, I think Christian Donner.
Oh, great. Owen, do you mind popping over? Christian Donner, please. And Christian, can you please put your camera on when you pop on, please? I won't see him, so if you guys can holler when he's on.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me and see me?
We hear you.
Can't see you, Christian.
Christian Donner, 923 Street.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
I hope it's quick. And there was a slide that, there was a slide about what the budget increase buys us. And then there were a bunch of bullets on that, and one of them was 3.5 teaching positions funded by ESAR. And I was able to Google what that is, and I was wondering what, how, what exactly ESAR funds and if not, the three positions we have in its entirety, what is the reason they are on this slide?
Looking for clarification on the money we used to ESAR. What is ESAR and what would those?
So want to get that slide back up there for ESAR?
Positions we funded. Is that sound right?
We, we did go through that, so let's go through it again.
I think you, and curious what ESAR is or was.
It is elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, so it's an external funding source. I was just wondering, you know, why, there is, why it's listed on the budget increase slide?
So those, Christian, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So those were positions that were funded by ESAR. And now that they're, because we have a funding cliff there with those positions, now we're putting those into the operating budget. That's why they're there.
We're losing, we're, we're losing that funding.
You're welcome.
And we.
That was my question. As you said, thank you very much.
And we did last year's budget with the understanding that these were very important positions that we needed to continue and we would need to absorb that cliff.
So the ESAR funding expired basically, huh?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christian. Thanks, Owen. All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. So at this point, we close out the public hearing, then afterwards we vote. Am I correct?
Nine years into this. No matter what you do.
All right.
Done it both ways.
You could do it both ways to be safe.
All right, let's do it both ways to be safe. Actually, I think we close it out and then we vote. And, all right. So do we have a motion to close this FY 2024 public hearing on the budget? Okay, thank you. So moved by Jess. Do we have a second?
Second, Tim Knight.
Second, Tim Knight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Great. Thank you. Public input and then we vote, right?
No, because we already did.
Public input, all right.
Now is open the meeting, the regular meeting, right?
That's right.
Oh, no, but we have to vote on the, we vote on the.
Closing the public.
No, we just did. Close the public hearing. Now we vote on the budget to accept the budget.
As the school committee budget.
As the school committee budget. Then we open the meeting.
Thank, thank you. All right. A lot of moving pieces.
Organizational.
Lot of moving pieces. All right. At this point, may I please have a motion to accept this FY 2024 school budget as the school committee budget?
So moved.
So moved, Jess. Do we have a second?
Second, Leo Brem.
Second, Leo Brem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. This is now the school committee budget.
Thank you, Dr. Marsden.
Thank you very much, Dr. Marsden. All right. Now at this point, we will open up our regular open session for school committee.
With a roll call?
With a roll call vote. No, good. Thank you. Start with Leo.
Leo Brem here.
Michelle Kirkby here. Jessica Riley here.
Tim Knight here.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brook here. Thank you, folks, for coming. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will open this regular school committee meeting and at this point, citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at this meeting during which the item is presented. Matters pertaining to the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of individuals will not be permitted. We will also allow members of the public to participate in public input through Zoom. Please raise your hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So at this time, do we have any public comment, either in person or on Zoom? Okay, great.
One second, let me check one more time.
Okay.
I think we're, nothing on Zoom.
We're good? All right, great. Thank you. All right. At this time, we will ask for a motion to approve the regular session minutes from January 12th, 2023.
So moved. Michelle Kirkby.
So moved. Michelle Kirkby, do we have a second?
Second, Leo Brem.
Second, Leo Brem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. And actually, for the policy subcommittee, the policy subcommittee is going to vote on their minutes in your next policy meeting. And then we will have that as an informational item after you vote on them. All right, great. All right. New business, school committee finance budget liaison. So now that this budget is our budget, we would like to appoint a budget liaison to work with Dr. Marsen, Marsden, and participate with the warrant committee folks. So it makes sense that Michelle Kirkby as finance secretary could please consider being the budget liaison and if we could have, are you open to that, Michelle?
I, I am. I'm open to that.
Okay, very good. And we have to vote on that, I believe?
I motion that Michelle Kirkby will serve as the budget liaison to the warrant committee for the school committee for the fiscal year 24 budget.
Second.
Second, thank you, Leo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, Michelle.
I love a good warrant committee meeting. It's good times.
All right. Next up is the 2023-2024 school year calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your materials, you have the first draft of our calendar for next year. I want to just turn your attention to the October and March where we have conference days for middle school and high school for the first time. So we're really excited about that. I know that is something that we've been working towards and our, our teachers are working towards that as well as far as planning, planning for it. And we have two committees going at the middle, one at the middle school, one at the high school, and they're looking at how to structure and, and best implement this, this new change. So I think that that's going fairly well. We hope to have a resolution on that by, you know, April or May. But Nat's leading one, Robert's leading another. They've come up with some great ideas. They've looked at other districts that do it. Try to get some best practices, some things that work out well. So they're, they're full steam ahead on that. So we'll have an update once we can, you know, once we get it all finalized. So that, we, we looked at that. We, we put in our professional development days throughout. You'll see that those are highlighted in yellow along with the conference days. We tried to be thoughtful and targeted around some of the days and some of the weeks. You know, we got a lot of good feedback around having the release day on the 31st, so that actually that October 30th should be the 31st for release day. Move that on there. Just want to change that.
I didn't love that personally as a parent.
You didn't love it as a parent?
I did not.
What didn't you love, sorry?
Not loving having a half-day on Halloween.
Oh.
Maybe if you were a second-grade teacher, you would. So, I mean, it's, we'll put that on. It's a first draft, so we're going through. So take a look at it. If there are things on here that you want, you want to have discussion on next meeting or things you think we want to do differently, we can make those changes and we typically vote, you know, in February anyway. So if we, if it's not ready in February, we could do it at the meeting after that, so.
I have a couple of questions. So I actually got a lot of questions about the school committee calendar in the fall. Everybody was like, "Well, you're on school committee, so you guys do the calendar." So my first question is, who puts together this first draft?
Leadership team.
Leadership team. So all of the principals and you, everybody's looking at this, putting together. Okay. My next question, I shared this with a couple of friends this evening because I wanted to get feedback from parents. One person wanted to know why middle school and high school conferences aren't on the same day and they're separated, they're separate by different weeks.
So that was if people have kids in both buildings, that gives them an opportunity to get, make sure they can schedule them for both buildings.
But elementary school right now is all on the same day, right?
Well, it's a little bit different because, you know, when you're looking at the elementary ones versus the high school, a high school teacher might have 130 kids.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that we gave enough time for teachers to, and they have a short window of time. Mathematically, it doesn't add up. You're not going to be able to have 130 conferences if you're, you know, a high school English teacher. It's not going to work out. So we want to make sure we give everyone the equal opportunity to go to both. And having them both, having them on the same day would be problematic for parents to do that. So that was the thought behind it.
The other thing, feedback-wise, from the parents, they felt that October and March just look really jarring because of the amount of yellow. So I don't know if it's worth considering that the middle school and high school conference days are in a different color? Or you color-code them a little bit?
Sure, we could do that.
Like.
Visually?
Quite a few people were like, "What is going on in March?" And then they were like, "Oh, that doesn't affect me," right?
Right, yeah.
Visual, that's good feedback.
That's a good idea.
October is a sea of yellow.
Yes.
Yes.
March and October.
Okay, makes sense. We can, we can do that. Any particular color requests on that?
No, just that they both, like, like I, like I said, I.
Isn't it a Casus anymore and Anchor?
Yeah, no.
Sent out to people and they, everyone wanted to know what was going on with March.
Okay. Well, March usually there's nothing in there, right? There's like one day that.
And then if you read it, it actually doesn't really affect you that much unless you have, you know, older kids.
Yeah, right.
And, and actually, it's a little easier, just speaking from having older kids now. It is a whole lot easier to have a half-day with your older kids because they are able to do more, be a little bit more independent. You're not worried about babysitting. You're not worried about this and the.
Right.
I also asked a handful of parents who had fourth and sixth grade kids because now you've got your fourth grader that has half-days and you've got your sixth grader now that's going to have different half-days, like how they felt about that, because that's, might feel like a lot of half-days to that family. The handful of people I spoke to said that they liked the idea of having that one-on-one time with that, those kids that they don't normally see.
That's good feedback.
I feel like it might be different from working families having to structure that in both places for those kids, so.
I'm sure the merchants uptown are happy about it.
Yes.
Less kids in their establishment at the same time.
Did they, can I ask, go ahead.
I just want to say that, you know, as we were talking about this and kind of moving through, while these are the, the conference times, in general, our staff have been so generous with their time and making sure that if there is a complete inability for somebody to make it, or they want to do a Zoom, or there's an evening time, I can't think of a single teacher in this district would say, "No, no, I can't, I can't accommodate that and we're not going to talk after 7:00 or whatever." So I think that there is an understanding that, you know, people have lives and kids and, you know, our teachers are kind of famous for being accessible anyway, so.
But I would also, I'd also make sure people utilize the times that we have set for. I mean, that's really important.
It's okay, guys. It's okay.
Because that's, that's, that's time that folks are required to be there where they're not required to do what you're talking about, so. Many, many of ours do, but I'm just saying they're not required to do that. So I wouldn't want to put that undue burden on them if they can't do it because of family obligations or whatever.
I, I hear you. But I also just wanted to kind of reassure people that throughout the year, you know, our teachers are very generous with their time and have met with parents. It doesn't just have to be that day.
Agreed.
Yeah, my, my only comment is, is while there is a sea of yellow, or whatever color it becomes, to me, it's a good, at least a good problem to have.
I agree with that, yeah.
We constantly say that. It's like a, you know, three-legged stool, your parent, your, your child and your teacher. Like, you know, so driving people to come, I love the fact that you, I've never had a teacher say, "No, we can't meet." But I, people all attend when you actually run the conferences and it forces a little different layer of preparation. So I think it's a congratulations.
This is monumental.
Jess, I think that was part of that, the contract we did last year too. So it's great to see that come through.
No, this is great. If I could do the happy dance right now, I would. It's just I really am elated and I think not only will I think, you know, parents take advantage of this, this is a cultural shift, I think. You know, that we're opening up our doors and welcoming parents into, even though it was always there, but this is, this is more, you know, blatant, so to speak. Yes, exactly. And so I am very grateful to the teachers that they're open to this. And I'm just so proud of the district that this is accomplished.
And I don't want to create complexity, but once in a while I do. Is the timing, like, anywhere linked to report cards or shortly thereafter?
Or semesters. I mean, I think what we're, what we found, especially this year, I, I met with, I meet with the faculty advisory every month and. met with, I meet with the faculty advisory every month, and teachers, and the feedback they gave us this year for elementary, was that it was really good to have the conferences before report cards went out, because the conversation's about the child, not a piece of paper, right? And I think that's what we're trying to do, is making sure that it's a really good conversation, so that our teachers can talk to parents directly about what they see in the classroom and what their child is doing versus always going back to what the grade was. So they strategically pick these around report card time and semester ending and that kind of thing, so I think it's, we'll give it a go and we'll see what it looks like. If we get feedback that it's not great, and we want to change it the following year, we can do that. You know, I think this is the first time around, though, there'll be, you know, I'm sure there'll be snafus with the scheduling and all that, I mean, it's just, it's, we've never done it before, you know? So we've, we've only talked to other communities that have done it and looked at their model, but once you actually do it, you know, you don't know how it's going to play out in your own building, so.
But we have to start somewhere.
We have to start somewhere, for sure.
Super, great. All right, at this moment, is any more discussion on the calendar, any other comments? Okay. Pre-K-12 ELA evaluation, come on up.
So Mary and Christine have really led this initiative and done a lot of great work with this. It's a, it's the perfect time, in terms of instruction and learning, for Language Arts, that we do this and reflect on what we're doing as a district, and see what improvements we can make with curriculum, with instruction, all those types of issues. So they will do a great job, as always. Go ahead.
Thank you.
During your role.
Hi, everyone, thank you for the opportunity for us to present on the ELA evaluation that is going on. So, why now? It's been a very interesting last two years, to say the least, and many people go right to the pandemic, but I want to bring up other things that are going on in our world in terms of, there's many different factors that have been really unfolding the last couple of months. The first is dyslexia guidance. So this is a massed on a law that was passed in 2018. The guidance was issued by the state in early 2021, and specifically focused on how districts need to best improve their practices and really help support kids with dyslexia. A second thing that we needed to really look at in the last two years is the impact of the pandemic, specifically on teaching. It's really interesting in terms of all the things that unfolded over the last couple of years with teaching, where, from pre-pandemic, where it was more of a traditional approach, and then over the pandemic, the amount of teacher collaboration that had been occurring, the use of technology, all those other pieces made us really think about what is teaching and learning, and what is unfolding within our classrooms. Third thing is that we started to incorporate new screeners in the district, specifically, for instance, the DIBELS screener for early literacy. And so that gave us a deeper dive and a deeper understanding of early childhood literacy within our schools. And last but not least, over the last couple of months, especially in the last year, there's been something called the Science of Reading, or the Science of Reading debates, that has been all over, including in media, within discussions within educators, with parents, specifically talking about approaches to teach literacy within schools. And so all the four of these pieces came together in the last couple of years, which really prompted Mary and I starting discussions and bringing Jeff into these discussions in terms of how best we can really get an understanding of what's going on specifically in our district. And so we came together and really came with a specific set of questions, of things that we wanted to investigate within Medfield Public Schools. Now, the first thing I'd like to pay attention for is when we started looking at all these different factors that were going on within the district, we really wanted to look at things and realize that this was just not an elementary piece, that we really could really benefit from a deep dive and a deep understanding of literacy practices across the district, that is from K through 12, really looking at how literacy unfolds, how is our ELA practices also are implemented, and how they build upon each other. And so you can see that the essential questions in terms of our thoughts on things that we wanted to investigate, when we started to unpack and really just look at literacy practices, and you can see just as the bullets go down, we've not only wanted to look at general education practices, but also things like how our screeners work, how is literacy, how is progress monitoring looking like, specifically about support that's offered, especially with those who do not receive special ed services. How is extra literacy support implemented? And also, what kind of instructional materials do we use, how are they used, and are they used effectively? So these are some of the pieces that were swirling around, considering all those other pieces that we were really investigating coming out of these last two years.
We partnered with Dr. Catherine Ullman Shad. She has her doctorate in child development and a master's in language and literacy. She has over 20 years of experience working with learners ages three to 22, as a teacher, curriculum designer, instructional coach, academic evaluator, professional development provider, and hospital and school liaison. She consults with school districts around the state surrounding best practices of literacy instruction, and she offers instructional coaching to teachers looking to improve their practice. We've had a lot of conversations with Dr. Shad, kind of trying to figure out what is it exactly, as Christine was saying, we had so many questions, we had so many different things that were really at the forefront of research, forefront of kind of methodologies, forefront of learning, and we really wanted to make sure that we were able to hone in on all of those. So, but we also really wanted to make sure that we also had the teacher voice, and that we were able to have parents involved in the conversation, that we were able to make sure that we understood really what was happening within Medfield, so that we could build on some of the wonderful things that are happening, and then increase some of the methodologies based off of so much of what we're learning in the past few years as well. So she, after all of those kind of conversations, mapped out a plan. She met with instructional leaders across the district, just to learn about instructional practices, the school cultures, really get an understanding of what literacy is for every building in Medfield. As we often say, there's the five islands, and we didn't want that feeling coming through this report as well. We wanted to make sure that there was that consistency, collaboration, communication happening amongst the buildings. So that was kind of one of the first pieces. She then worked with focus groups, which was a representative group of educators in every single grade range and instructional role. So she met with each one of these in small groups and individual interviews throughout the early part of October and into November. And then she performed classroom observations. She started off with like, you know, I think maybe 20 to 25. She ended up doing over 50 observations, individual observations within classrooms, within special education rooms, within the intervention spaces. She really dove in and wanted to make sure that she saw every aspect of it. She is still going in for observations of SST process at each building as well. And then she coordinated surveys based off of kind of.
SST, just to explain what that.
Sorry, the student support, I always do that, man, I thought I was doing well with it. SST are the student support teams, so for, if a student is starting to show difficulties within a classroom, whether it's behaviorally, academically, socially, emotionally, the teachers kind of first start to try to do things in the classroom based off of what they know, that what is available to them, supports that are already built in, and then they may say, you know, I need some support with this student. And so there's a team of educators and administrators that function at every building, and the teacher can bring that student, a profile of them, kind of an understanding, and that team helps to ask questions, to gather data, to give suggestions of, let's go back and collect data on A, B, and C, and come back to the table and see what that data yields us and where we might want to go from there. Again, five schools, five processes that we continue to hone in on, but Dr. Shad is coming in to see all of those as well. She then created surveys, they are kind of wholly focused on the curriculum that may be available, so for the grades that are functioning with foundations, she has one survey, she has other surveys based off of buildings that are going out, and then she'll be doing a parent meeting. So these are the methods that she set up, and then this is the timeline, so you kind of understand where we are right now and what to expect moving forward. So as I said, she completed those interviews and focus groups in October. She did those observations. I say that it's completed, but, but as I, as I keep saying, every time we think that we've had an opportunity to show her everything, we start having conversations about another aspect that we want to make sure she has eyes on and is able to really understand literacy in all of its realms within Medfield. So she is doing a few more observations in January and February. She, the surveys are going out this week, either tomorrow or Monday, depending on the buildings. The parent feedback session for all 14 of you that are hopefully still on Zoom, spread the word, is January 31st, so Tuesday night, at 7:00 at the High School LMC, or Library Media Center?
We sent that out as an email.
Yes.
Last week to everybody, too.
And then there will be a formal report that will be released in the spring, and then she, we also spoke with her about trying to do a follow-up parent session after that report is released, so that she can kind of go over the major findings and make sure that she's able to have that time explaining those findings and those recommendations to the parents and guardians in the community as well.
Do you want to look into that next?
Sure.
Here we go. Okay. In addition to that, the literacy, a look at literacy, there are a number of different curriculum initiatives going on, so I just wanted to take an opportunity just to share a couple of them with you. The first is the math pilot, we talked about it in the budget, we're talking about it here. Currently, within our pre-K through grade five, we are piloting three separate programs. And with doing that in the structure in terms of three different teachers per grade level are piloting three different programs. And copious amounts of data are being collected in terms of really understanding how, what is the impact of this, how effective is it, it's the, how much the parents, we're reaching out to parents and guardians, getting their feedback, teachers, of course, really understanding in terms of this curricula, and what does it look like within our schools? So we're currently in phase two, we are wrapping up next week with illustrative. We started in the fall with a reveal math by McGraw-Hill. Currently, we're again, we're wrapping up illustrative, which is Kendall Hunt, and then we'll be soon starting something called Stepping Stones by Oregon Math. And then we all plan to wrap all this up by late March, and in doing so, just really collecting all these different points of data along the way, and really getting feedback in order to really put forward a recommendation to Dr. Marsden and to you in terms of where the direction we'd like to put forward for a future math curricula. But we're really excited about it, the focus on these math programs are really project-based, really student inquiry-focused, and it's just been the, what we're seeing in terms of the feedback coming back has been pretty tremendous, so I'm very excited about it.
Christine, I know you mentioned it, can you just talk a little bit about what kind of communication was had with the parents? I know you mentioned it, but I think it's good to reinforce that again.
Sure, yeah, there's been multiple. So the pilot self's been shared with parents in a variety of different ways. We worked, we worked really closely with the building leadership on this all throughout the way, and keep in mind, this has been a two-year process. We started back in 2021 with a team of teachers, really, in their voices were part of really talking about our need for math, what is, what are we looking at, and especially really helping pick those different pieces of curricula. We started off with identifying 10, then we worked to really narrow it down to the top three. And at that point, we worked to really narrow down which teachers would pilot. Once those pilot teachers were identified, we reached out directly to the parents and indicated and shared with them that, that their child would be participating in a pilot, and that explained all along the way. One of the key points of this pilot was really important, that whether or not a child was in the pilot group or not, that they would get the same understanding, they would meet the same framework standards that any other student would be. So everyone is meeting the same expectations, the same standards, they're just using different curricula to get there. So parents were provided, I met, I emailed all them, they, through the site council meetings, and as well as through, we presented in school committee, we mentioned this as well. But on top of that, I created a dedicated website, and really shared that with parents as well, providing them multiple different points of what's going on, what are the programs, they could take a look at the programs, they could ask me questions, and so they're aware of the processes. I just sent out an email today, I've been emailing parents, I sent one out just earlier today also, and that's part of that feedback process, that as we finish up each phase, parent is reached out, they are indicated that we wrapped up this part, and what's their feedback? What are they hearing at home about the program? Because that's really important as well. So that's something that will be part of the overall data, and that's something that we'll share with you later on this spring.
And what was the impetus that caused us, I guess, kind of leaving our previous math and moving towards a pilot?
Yeah, so a couple of different reasons. First was teacher feedback. Teachers were seeing in terms of that math instruction, while really strong, there was just things that we could do better, especially with the focus on project-based learning, and really thinking about how instruction could be more dynamic. And so the other piece is that over the last couple of years, there's been a number of different curriculums emerging, this really is just taking math in a completely different direction. It is taking it out of the world that we may have been more familiar with growing up, and really putting it into using real-world problems, really pushing it and having the students. I was in a classroom the other day, and the amount of student talk versus teacher talk was amazing in terms of just unpacking, it was all about sandwiches, and different ways of dividing up sandwiches, and different ways to, how to accommodate three people and four people, and it was a lot of turn and talk, it was a lot of using visuals. It was, it was really tremendous. And the students just chatting and involved, it just was very clear. So that, those were a couple of the pieces in terms of really having us relook our math, just our math practices in general.
Okay, very good.
So a couple of other things is curriculum bias review. For the last couple of years, this is something that we've done, but specifically what we're using, it's really looking at the evidence of who's, what kind of viewpoints are coming through in our curricular materials, and whose perspectives are apparent and whose may not be apparent. So what we did was that we used to a, a survey that was created by the University of Washington. They created a rubric that teachers could use to help walk through and really look at many different lenses in terms of, what are the different curriculum materials that they're using, and whose perspectives are there? For example, if women are depicted, are they, are they, do they have jobs as doctors and lawyers, or things like that, in terms of what kind of perspectives, whose point of view? And so this is something that we have walked, the teachers themselves right now are taking three pieces of curriculum a month, and they are just looking through that, and that's being captured in Google Data Studio, which is super powerful, because what that does is, that the student, that the teachers themselves are filling out, just this type, this is just a sample, and at that point, what happens visually is, it becomes over time, super clear in terms of where, where's the focus in our curricula, and whose voices, and what sort of perspectives are there, and what's not. And that's usually guiding, that is right now guiding discussions within departments, within grade levels, in terms of just selecting curriculum material, or just something like a story for read aloud, or just in terms of really thinking about curriculum in a different way. The third thing is NIAS masking, curriculum mapping. Our high school teachers have mapped their curriculum, they do it very well, but the one thing that the NIAS report showed was specifically that although the mapping was occurring, that they were different formats for every department, and that was something that came through in the NIAS report. So over the past two years, last year and this year, we're really working on building on that feedback, and they now have a standardized template for which they can really think about how they record their different curricular aspects, and also asking those deeper dives in terms of, what's the evidence of differentiation, what kind of common assessments? Really having a way that all teachers are working across the high school on the same template, so that can foster really robust conversations about their curricula. These three are very near and dear to my heart, it's all data-related, and they're all interrelated, so that's why they're together. Big project that we're working on right now is creating a data dashboard, something I'm really excited about, because we collect a number of pieces of data, and they're great and they're phenomenal, but they're in different repositories all over. And so people use them very well, but what happens is, sometimes is that it's difficult for a teacher to use. For instance, to get individual MCAS data, it's something that is printed off by the principal for that, and distributed or department chair to get distributed. And that's something that individual teachers can use in order to inform their practice. What the dashboard does is takes all these different forms of data and puts it together, and really provides a comprehensive view. And it also, the key part of this is that it's highly consumable by teachers. It is visual, it is usable, and it's something that teachers can go back time and time again to look. again to look at the, these important pieces of data and use it to inform their practices, whether it's in CPT and working with other educators, it's whether they're looking at their own individual classrooms, it's whether to look at just student performance. So that's something we're pulling together. Again, we have great data practices, but to pull it together and then providing, that's the other part, is providing the teachers the skills to use that well.
And the state's done a really good job providing us a lot of information. I mean, they've really expanded their, their data network in the last, you know, probably five years. But some of their programs in there look clunky, you know? So this, this allows us to take what we think is important and put it in our database so that we can make it user-friendly for teachers and they can use that information to inform their instruction. I mean, it's, you look at the research everywhere, it's like high-performing in schools for kids all have data teams and work and look at data and, and look at data monthly and weekly and, and really try to improve what they're doing. So I think this is a great, a great step in the right direction, and Christine's been working really hard on this.
So the other two are related. The second part is the grading and assessment alignment. Now, there's a number of different data points, which is in grades are a really important one. What, what we discovered, though, is that, it's interesting, especially in the 612, especially in, it's just fascinating in terms of we looked at the practices themselves and realizing that sometimes within departments or between departments that the expectations were not exactly aligned. That sometimes that a, one department would allow extra credit, another would not, one person, one group would weigh maybe hallmark one percentage and the other department wouldn't. And we realized that there was just these different inconsistencies along the way. And the impact of that is for a couple of things. First of all, from a student perspective, a student coming in, and especially coming to the high school with, with seven different teachers, for example, that they may have to maneuver multiple different expectations, and it's a challenge. And so we really thought it from a, from a student's standpoint of how best can we think about whatever our practices? And from a student, just trying to alleviate any confusion that may be there. The other part is to really think about this, and it's not creating that greater continuity between 612, right? Really thinking about, we have, and this is not about a system, so this isn't about SBR versus grades, this is just really about practices themselves of what are some things within departments? And really creating that. And so there's been a lot of conversation about taking an individual department and having folks in middle school and having folks in high school talk about their philosophy around things like extra credit. Why is it there? What is the purpose? And then having them go on all of those different four points there, late work. What is the thought about late work? What, what is the reason whether or not they choose to mark something late, for instance, with a penalty? Retakes or reduce? And the, the last one, of course, is waiting and how much things are weighted versus testing quizzes or wait, it's one amount, or whether you do a point system or whatever system it is. And again, it's the, it's the continuity aspect, but it's also creating a clarity in terms of just for us to really know that the, the data and the grade data is something that's consistent across. And so we're working towards that and really working closely with the department chairs as well as the leadership, and they've been phenomenal on that. The last is, sorry, go ahead.
So is the, is it, is it, at least departments may have their own, you know, there may be reasons why retakes are relevant and it's something math wants to do and English doesn't. Are you trying to get it to be consistent across departments? Or if nothing else, say, hey, consistent within a department?
It's a really good discussion. I think that I can say right off a cookie cutter model, well, just the fact that science has laps, right? For instance, and where does that fit? Or things like that. How we started and we approached this is that we have the department chairs and the leadership together. And we really started with philosophy. What do we believe? What do we believe in terms of students' experience versus extra credit versus late work versus reduce? And then we came up with the collective philosophy. And at that point, we had a PD last spring in terms of having each department interpret that within the constraints of their, of their own individual department, so it made sense. And so it's all speaks to the same. So we have the overall philosophy that guides us, but it might be interpreted a different way. So for instance, that late work is one, one just example. Now, the philosophy was that we believe that students should be able to demonstrate understanding of work within reason, right? So if there is, is it about the workers, is just penalizing if someone doesn't pass something in, should they just say, no, you're not allowed? So we had a philosophical discussion on that. And at that point, we realized that it's really important to have a demonstration of learning. So it's important for us to accept that late work. And so at that point, once we, we had that philosophy, it was every department now talking within their departments of let's create a consistency within the math department, let's create consistency within the science department, all meeting that overall philosophy of, you know what, we're all going to accept late work. Versus before, it was a little bit more haphazard. And so what we're going to do actually on February 8th is go back and revisit this again, see where we've been for the past six months since implementation, and see if we can hone it again as we start really refining and thinking about our practices and the impact that we see within the classroom.
No, it's, I'd be willing to bet you'll have heated discussions eventually.
I'm sure.
It's like, you know, you definitely, cookie cutter scares me.
Yeah, and that's not, and I can tell you, that's not where we're going. Because I, it is just towards a, a common philosophy, for instance, in terms of the goal was, should students be able to demonstrate understanding of their work?
Yeah, but consistency is important, you know, within a department. So if you've got two history teachers, one takes late work, one takes extra credit, that...
If, if they're teaching the same, just, I'm just world history two, just say, and you have two teachers, see the same thing, we definitely need consistency between these two, for sure.
And I do think that there is something to be said here about the consistency also, as you said, helps kids negotiate seven teachers. Because in many, 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 if not most, high schools, they, kids do not take seven classes. You know? Like, we overload kids on credits because we believe that that's important, that that's real learning. But we also have to give them the ability to understand what's happening to them in a way that does not place more cognitive load on them simply negotiating the system as opposed to really understanding what it is and why they're doing it. And having our philosophies aligned with that, the philosophy of demonstrating the learning and knowing what they're doing without that fear and that constant anxiety.
When I first started in the district, I had the great fortune of really working closely at the middle school and having multiple conversations with students as well as with parents, and really looking at that eighth to ninth grade transition. And this is one of those things that's coming out of it, really thinking about that, that middle school experience and then the high school where it, and, and again, I'm speaking as a former high school teacher, I, I get the culture in terms of that, but how can we really think of it from a student's perspective and ease that, that transition beyond those other pieces as well? And then the last pulls it all together, it's data teaming. So I talked about the, setting up the dashboard and making data really consumable and usable, but it's also really thinking about our practices and what the consistency, and then pulling it together and data teaming. We just had a PD on the 24th, just, yeah, a couple of days ago, on the 24th, really looking at our teachers' data literacy skills and really, really providing them the supports and the education they need to take these data, look at what's going on in the classroom, and really apply that in order to really shift and, and really leverage really deep learning practices. So that's been ongoing in terms of these, these looks at data and it's really to help support that. So things from, everything from just learning data terminology to, at the, at the elementary schools, teachers took data themselves, identified and, and came up with the question themselves and used the data to really speak to that and what kinds of things that they're seeing in the data to speak to the questions. So this is really exciting in terms of, this is all pulling together. And all the different pieces that have been setting up are now sort of ready to launch, and so we're really there.
That's what instructional coaches would do. So you'd have instructional coaches that would gather that data, look at it, synthesize what the most important thing is for the teachers to look at, and then meet with them so the teachers aren't having one more thing put on them, right? So the instructional coach does that work, meets with the principal, meets with the teachers, and then the teachers can get that information without having to go dig and die for it everywhere because someone else is doing it for them. So that's another, in addition to modeling lessons and, you know, that, that's another key piece of instructional coach and what they can do to help learning.
And to Jeff's point, this is something that is just everywhere now in terms of the power of using these practices in the classroom, and, and it's, it's just a great thing to see. So just a couple of things else is the advanced placement review. It's really an opportunity for us to really look at AP. We offer so many AP classes and just really, these are really great opportunities for our students. But really, just we, we took a moment and did a pause in terms of, we spoke to AP teachers, we spoke to the department chairs themselves, and we just said, let's go look at your practice and just reflect. And what we realized that it was time for us to really look at in terms of what kind of preparation did they have? What kind of resources did they have? What opportunities they have with data? And are they reflecting on the data? And so realizing that in, that there were some cases that folks received training, but maybe it was more than a couple of years ago, and let's provide that training. Let's give you the most up-to-date supplemental or materials that you need. And really, really set those, those teachers up for success. So that was an opportunity, I worked really closely with building leadership at the high school as well as the department chairs. And we took some time over the summer and we've met since then multiple times. And really, it's, it's really resulted in a look at AP and folks are wanting to get training, they're getting supplies, and, and it's just real joy with that as well.
Sorry, Christine. So if a student takes an AP, they're required to take the AP exam, correct? Okay.
That's, but that is not the case in every district. And I think that's one of those things that we covered last year.
Sure.
That, you know...
Sorry? That's always been that way.
But that's one of the reasons that, you know, philosophically, again, you take the AP exam and we think that's important here, at least right now, and we'll be kind of thinking about it. But it's also one of the reasons that sometimes our ratings as they appear in, you know, the meaningless national magazines look a little lower because there are schools that simply say, you know, we presented you with this enormous amount of information, but if you are not intending to get the credit for the AP exam and for this class, then there is no need for you to take the final exam. And then those kids are taken out of your data pool. And then it looks like you've got, you know, fantastic grades on that or fantastic scores on that across the board. Ours is probably more asked, honestly, but, you know, makes people scream sometimes.
Yep. And our last two things, the Claver Fellows Grant. So we have a great partnership with Boston College, and that partnership really focuses on standard-based assessments at Blake. And we're working really closely with Dr. Nathaniel Brown and, in the Education Research Department there, are really working at supporting our teachers and really honing those practices. What this, this grant is, is a, it is a grant that supports graduate students to help crunch some data. We're collecting data around that. We're really doing PD and having labs for stipends. And it, Dr. Brown will be working really closely with our teachers to really hone those practices and really support them with this standard-based work with our grades that are offered on, within their report cards.
Cool, sorry, quick question. And so in that grant study, is the transition from middle school to high school incorporated? Because I know that, that's a big deal to folks.
Yes, so there is that, it was the report that was issued a couple of years ago, that was definitely something that was read and, and understood in terms of foundational piece, in terms of where we've come. And then really going into discussing all those major pieces that came out at the end of those reports, including the transition, including those other pieces. And that's part of that overall support of how we can take our SBR system and, and improve it and really make it better. And then part of that is that there are going to be opportunities to outreach, to continue that outreach that happened during that time period in terms of outreach to parents, outreach to students, collect those data and, and really understand in terms of what's the impact of this on not only the students but the greater community. And the last but not least, I put this there because it's just an example how things can change on the dime. As we all know, we've probably heard ChatGPT has been quite the buzz since December, I think it is, it came out. And it's really rocked people's worlds, I would say. And it's just changed the way people are really thinking about teaching and learning. So as the advent of, of this AI tool that can be used, it's incredibly powerful, that can be used in incredible ways as an educator, but also poses some, some questions in terms of assessment and how assess the, the availability and easy access to cheating. So we are working to support our teachers and really adapting to this. This is a relatively rapid adapt. We saw this coming out right before the break, we were like, we need to really support them. And so just various different ways, I sent out a, a support document with just not only just the what is ChatGPT 101, but also opportunities to learn more, professional development, teaching tips, ways to use this in a positive way, things to think about to mitigate any cheating opportunities. And so that's just one example of just taking this, something that wasn't even on the radar in November, and all of a sudden saying, this is something that we need to address and continue to address going, moving on. And so those are just some of the, the Whitman Sampler, if you will, of just different things that are going on in, in my office. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but there's a lot of just really interesting and, and great things going on.
There is. I'm so glad you brought that up because there was a whole brilliant thing on, on Point on NPR about ChatGPT. But anyway, so it's a changing world.
I was gonna ask Lily, I mean, is that the rage for the, saying, hey, you know, homework's no longer two hours, it's two minutes.
Yeah, I, I don't really know anybody who's...
Getting good grades with it, though.
Yeah, I don't really know anybody who's like actually used it, but like, I feel like people have definitely tested it out to like, see if it works. And like, it's seemed decent from like what I read, which is like scary, but then I also know that some English classes right now, instead of like writing an essay or actually like being taught to like use the ChatGPT to like see if they like it and like maybe edit it to more like their style to like explore it.
That's an example of different ways. The way it can be used to support education is pretty powerful in terms of using it for foreign language instruction, for instance, and, and having that ability to chat with someone, right? Or the bot who's in a foreign language. It's to use it for essay prompts. It's to, I mean, teachers can use it to create quick games and quick reflections. There, the possibilities are unbelievable and we've just only tapped this much. So this is something that we are constantly, I'm working with the tech integration team on this.
Differently, too, right? Because some people did the knee-jerk reaction of shutting it, shutting it down, we didn't do that.
So Boston and New York shut it down completely. And my opinion is, and it's funny, I mentioned it to my son who's a junior, who was just like, yeah, mom, and pulled it up on his phone. There's no way we're going to shut this down, right? Because it just is, right? And so it's, it's more of, the philosophy is more about how can we support our educators to adapt to this environment and really think about their thinking versus shutting it down completely. And I may be showing my age, but remembering when calculators came back out in terms of like, oh, people aren't going to use math for math instruction because they're going to have calculators. And that's an example of, yes, so people do do quick math on this, but the depth of understanding of math has just grown because it's, at that point, you don't really need to use the brain power so much on this rote piece, you can really go beyond. So we're at the real, it's really exciting time in terms of this technology is coming, we're really figuring out what it can do. And for us and the dilemma for us, me as an educator and all our, the educators, is really thinking about how we can harness this in a way to really support really in deep, deep learning in really exciting ways.
It's not going away.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Christine. All right, so that was the curriculum update as well. So next on the agenda, Westboro Public Schools Admittance to the Accept Collaborative.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your documents, you have a letter from the board, from the Executive Director of Accept explaining that Westboro has applied to be in the Accept Collaborative. So they came to our meeting a couple, maybe like three or four weeks ago, did a presentation, their Special Education Director Superintendent, and they, you know, made a pitch to us about joining the collaborative. They actually have students in the collaborative right now from Westboro. They were able to offer some really good examples of how they can support all of us as a collaborative member. So we currently have 15 districts in the Accept Collaborative. They would be number 16, and Wayland actually applied and met with us yesterday on that or the day before, no, yesterday. So Wayland is also looking to get in, but they're, they're just beginning the process. So Westwood has already gone through the, the meeting with us, and we voted to approve their application to come into Accept Collaborative. And we voted to approve their application to come into Accept Collaborative. So, you know, there's some downsides there when the collaborative gets a little bit bigger. And Leo has worked in a couple of collaboratives. He might, you know, identify with this where, you know, certain things like we, we charge member districts a lower rate than we do non-member districts, right? So there's a revenue issue there where it's phased in for new districts that come in. So the first year it's a 10% surcharge, the second year it's a 5%, the third year it's what members pay. Whereas if you were a non-member, you pay a 20% surcharge on everything. But having additional members of the board and having additional opportunities for especially transportation was something that was advantageous that we thought for the collaborative. So I would ask that you would vote this so that we can, there's one, I think, two more districts besides us that haven't voted yet, so we could accept Westboro in the Accept Collaborative.
I'll make a motion to approve Westboro into the Accept Collaborative.
Motion by Leo Brem, second. Second. Second, Jess Riley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. All right.
Thank you.
Well, hopefully that'll work out.
We'll get that over to them.
You know, in some ways, there is, when Framingham pulled out so quickly a few years ago, and that really ended up making transportation so much more expensive
Sure did.
for everyone. So if there is a capacity to kind of increase that transportation average, it would be very helpful.
And then proximity-wise with Wayland, they're right next door to Natick, right? So it makes sense for them to join. I know they're part of Tech as well. So they're 45 minutes away from Tech. They've always been a part of Tech, but never been a part of Accept. So that's why they're looking to do that as well. But we didn't have a vote or really a discussion, it was just a presentation yesterday. And we'll do that at a future meeting.
Very good. Okay. Next item on the agenda, if we could please reschedule our February 9th meeting to February 13th.
Maybe Monday, right?
Which is a Monday, yes. And I'd really love for all five members to be at that meeting because we are going to discuss the appeal, the banned book appeal. So I think it's important that all five members are present. And Tim's traveling on the 9th. So I'd like to vote to change it from the 9th to the 13th.
So moved.
So moved. So moved by Leo, second by Michelle Kirkby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Great. So our next meeting is not February 9th, but February 13th, Monday. And all five of us will be there. Any other items since posting on the 24th?
I'm sure I just want to mention, it's not an item, but I was happy to receive that email that we're looking at starting the School Building Committee again. So looking for dates and trying to pick dates to have our first meeting. So I haven't gotten anything yet about the first meeting, but we, we had a poll on what dates work. So that's good. Things are moving and looking forward to get that going again.
Ditto. Great. Perfect. All righty, old business, community engagement communications. Any updates from?
So the virtual informal conversation happened, Leo and Tim. Do you have an update on that?
It was, it was a nice conversation. We had a handful of people show up, some concerns about this appeal process. You know, there was some discussion about the feedback, the policies. And what was the other third major item?
Yeah, just pulling up my notes.
Yeah.
One second.
Policies.
So the appeal, policies.
The use of social media in the schools.
Social media.
Yeah. And teacher accounts. You know, with, when teachers have their own Twitter account, well, they have a Twitter account. So it's, you know, someone says grade six, but it's also their only Twitter account. So they're using it for private things too. So conversations on social media, which I thought were very interesting, but we could bring up at another, another time.
Yeah. How many people attended, more or less?
Six, I think, seven?
Okay. And how many attended in person?
No, this was just Zoom.
It was Zoom.
No, no, no. When Jess and Michelle, you two.
But we had one register and someone show up. I think you guys had 10 register, right?
We might have. And some people just stayed in the waiting room just to listen to.
Okay. All right. So do you folks feel that it's worthy to have another one?
People appreciated it. So I thought the Zoom, I think, was convenient for folks.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably a better way to do it.
Okay. All right.
I thought it was helpful and productive to have a little more conversation.
Yeah.
Definitely, you know, a couple of the topics I started looking at from a slightly, from a different light. I'm like, okay, I understand it. I think Chris was in there as well. I think even, you know, sometimes it got into policy. In an ideal world, what would we do? Which is an interesting conversation. And after we left the room, I also, or I left the meeting, I was like, you always have to think for policy. I remember about, hey, what about, what's the impact on union contracts and whatnot? So, but it was, it was, I think, it was very valuable, some of the, some of the topics. So I was, I would say better than expected.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe.
So maybe we'll come up with another date.
We did, yeah, I think we've done two.
Yeah. We just wanted to test the waters.
Yeah, we would say, we said we would assess after two. So we did one in person and one virtual. And it, I would say from both of them, it sounds like we had some semblance of increased communication with, with some members of our community that had concerns and questions. I feel like that was the attention, so that's positive, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, it's like, I think the only, just the human element is, you always, you know, just, I think it's part of what's inside us. You want to exit with like a solution, you know, and some of those, and we don't, and we can't. And, you know, people will have strong feelings one way or the other.
Yeah.
But I think it was, you know, it was, it's just a different format. And I think the spirit of the attendees was in line with what we would want.
Okay.
Which was a good thing. I think people showed up to have a good, good collaborative conversation.
Right, right. Now, would it be helpful in addition to the school, to school committee members to, to maybe have, if a staff person would be interested in joining, in case there's any questions beyond or just keep it?
I don't, I think that crosses a boundary.
Yeah.
You know, the staff are Dr. Morrison's purview.
Well, we would, yeah, okay.
And so I
Yeah, I mean, I just think the issue is if there's things that are brought up that may not be your purview and questions, right? If you have someone there to answer, like I, some of the feedback on the math pilot and all that. I mean, that really not your purview to do all that, yet there's a lot of misinformation. So if someone was there, you know, it could have been.
That was one of the items that came up, I think.
So that ends up being kind of like a specific, you know, like you would want to make sure that that was a specific discussion where the committee was opening that.
Right, yeah.
I know Andover just helps redirect people and follows up afterwards with that individual and the person in the school that they would need to connect with.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And ask to loop back with the school committee member so that they also understand the answer to the question that they weren't able to really put details on.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's more of a, it's having that human piece of connecting with that human, but also helping them close the loop in a, I guess, like more efficient and, I don't know, nicer fashion, right?
Yeah, yeah. Because people want the connection and to be heard.
Answers, right? But then everybody has it, right?
Exactly. Okay, good. All right. So maybe we'll come up with some other dates.
Yeah.
All right. Great. And part of that community engagement, I did go to the Dale Street PTO. And that was so wonderful. Just because I suppose coming off, I'm still healing from, you know, the failed vote. And I just, I had these preconceptions. And I went to, into the school, the parents there who are volunteers, Steve Grenham, Dr. Morrison was there for a little bit. And just the energy, everything, everyone is onwards and upwards, you know? And they're making great things happen there despite the situation. So I really left with a lift, you know? All parents, you know, those parents were on board, doing great things. Those kids are doing awesome things over there. So it was just, I was very grateful that we've instilled this. So thank you.
I would never expect anything less of our staff, but it speaks well to them that they are, you know?
No, exactly. Especially when you're getting bombarded with, what are you doing with Dale, you know? And then you go in there and great things are still happening despite that. So, but they still need better facilities. So that's, we're not going to derail from that. All right, anything else?
I don't have anything else, no.
Okay, cool. Medfield School Committee Policy. The draft proposed BEDH, BEDH dash E. Do we have any discussion before the vote?
I just have, yeah, there's, there's one update that I should be in the packet. And BEDHE, and this was raised a little while ago that I looked at. There was, I think, one thing that it may or may not have been a typo in the MASC model policy. But if you look in your packet, it just talks about any citizen who wishes to make a presentation to the school committee, an item which is of interest to them and with the scope of the committee's responsibility, may be a request to be placed on the agenda for a particular meeting. Such requests should be in writing and should be received by the superintendent of schools at least two weeks prior to the date of the meeting. And it, it really, I don't think it should be exclusively the superintendent of schools.
I have enough to do, I really don't want it. So if you guys
They've always come to the chair.
They always come to the chair, so.
I think we have to change a policy that says, there's a couple, there's one that immediately after that, within a couple of things that says that it should go to the superintendent. So I'll just try to change that one as well.
So, so let's just, so that, there was some, like, it kind of went back and forth. One thing I kind of thought, you could conceivably strike the sentence. A request would be made. Leave it unstated. I don't know if that's ideal because it doesn't know. So I just, there was different options. I eventually, I thought the superintendent of schools or the chair of the committee.
Yeah.
It's onerous for residents might not know, hey, I sent it to Dr. Morrison. That seemed appropriate. Dr. Morrison might want to bring it forward or it could go to you. It could come to me.
I'd rather not be involved in any of it, to be honest with you.
No, it not
Oh, really? No, really?
No, it comes to the chair.
So go to you guys.
Yeah. I agree.
So, so that and that, I think that's the only, the item. And I, I don't have a strong, I suggest, I said, I didn't like by the superintendent of schools with nothing else. That's the way it was reading. So I said, or the chair of the school committee. You know, I don't know that you're going to get called out. If Dr. Morrison was issued a request, he then raised it with you. And you said, yeah, we'd want to put that on the agenda. You know, should that, because of timing, that's the way it came in, it's not horrible.
I suppose, but, so that's policy. In practice, it has been that, you know, citizens would come, would email or let the, the chairperson know.
I don't think I've ever gotten an email in my 17 years of superintendent with someone asking me to put something on the agenda.
But I have.
Yeah, but you should because you're the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever gotten one. So this doesn't change my life at all, or the next superintendent's life. I mean, it just, we don't get them.
We should, the chair should.
Yeah, so I don't, I mean, I didn't discuss it until now, like this, this came, like as a, as a group. I, I, the thing that I thought was important was that it should be, it should reference the chair of the committee.
Yes.
Regardless, and that was left out. The next sentence then says, you know, the chair of the committee works with the superintendent to formulate the meeting agenda. So it does acknowledge that there's some collaboration.
Right, that's a
Where, it's a tricky sentence too, because it kind of might set the expectation. If you request it, you shall get it. And I, I don't think that's necessarily going to happen either.
Correct.
So like, there is a, there is back and forth. As I said, policy is tricky, no matter what. In some cases, you know, leave it unstated. But you can just, I think that just based on this discussion, which is said, should be received by the chair of the committee at least two, two weeks prior to the date of the meeting. That's aligned with what this meeting is, so.
So in BEDB, scratchy. It does say that the agenda is the superintendent conferring with the chairman or what we changed is chair in a blanket.
Yes, yes.
But we're waiting for the digitization. We'll arrange the order of meetings on meeting agendas so the committee can accomplish its business expeditiously. So there is an indication there. The other issue here is that, let's see, what was it? Items of business may be suggested by any school committee member, staff member, or citizen. The inclusion of such items, however, will be at discretion of the chair of the committee. A staff, the only reason that Dr. Morrison would need to be involved is if it were a staff member. So the staff member has to specifically submit it through Dr. Marsden in order to put it on the agenda. So, you know.
Is that the way it reads?
That's the way it reads, yep.
Also, also never happened to me ever either, so. That's also never happened ever.
Yeah, I didn't think so either. But if we're looking at kind of integrating what it is we're doing in one to the other.
Yeah, I understand.
I do have some other notes on this policy.
Please.
They're much more serious, I think, than grammar. And they're philosophical. So I think right now I have a concern about if I think about why it is that we may think about changing this policy, which we have considered and which is far outside of the scope of policies throughout the state. I've thought about equity of voice and input. And I've thought about the efficient running of the business of the district. And that that is actually the chair's and the school committee's one of our kind of greatest responsibilities. Right now, the way I look at this public comment, I see that we have done something very positive at the beginning. And that we have decided to present public comment across all agenda items as well as things that are out of the, under the purview of the committee that are not on the agenda. And I think that's fantastic. And that is, as we've discussed here, an equity issue for people across our, you know, across the people that we serve, specifically as well as townspeople. But often our families' voices are lost to the realities of family life. So if we can provide a time where they could speak to anything, that's great. I have two concerns about the mandate to allow individuals to request from the floor to open up on key items that they would choose to, to comment on again.
Before vote?
Before we vote. First of all, it does remove that equity portion. It gives somebody who has the ability to sit longer to have that second voice, that second comment. And that's not the worst of it. I don't think that's a terrible thing. But I do think that removing the responsibility of the chair and the chair's best judgment and the committee's best judgment as to whether to open that up and mandate that is not good policy. It requires you to do something that I think we have not looked at, the far-ranging views or the far-ranging kind of consequences of that. You know, we are, I think that in, I think that in some ways, if you were to choose to do this, and we felt it was important, I would say that I could better support this if we said that the chair is strongly encouraged, but is not mandated to take from the, take comment from the floor. Because at that point, given that there are so many things that people can stand up and play their ukulele if they choose to in that three minutes. Once we've opened the floor, that is open to all public speech, all public comment, and all free expression. And that's great, but it does not, I think that when you are chair, you kind of get a read about how things are going. And you know what people have said. You know when the, the floor is saying, I think I have something else, something different to say. I think that the chair needs to either have the ability to say that it is, that somebody may request, but we don't say in this policy whether you must, right? Does the chair actually have to do that? Because that's a second part, right? It's your meeting as a chair, whatever chair you are. It's your meeting as a chair, whatever chair you are. Must you then open up the floor to that comment, or you simply take suggestions from the floor? And the other thing is, you are removing the reason that people voted for the people who are here, which is they believed that there was a level of judgment and an ability to hear people's opinions, understand what they are saying, and to be. And sometimes, the, the opinions might not necessarily add anything to that particular vote, right? You know, within a meeting, that sometimes if you're getting to an agenda item where all of a sudden you are opening it to another 15 minutes of comment, three minutes apiece, and you're not sure that anybody is going to be able to bring much more to the table on that, that's a judgment call, and it's a judgment call around experience. I would say that this kind of takes away the power of the chair to move through the business of the committee expeditiously, and move forward to be able to serve our kids the best, so that we can get to the next thing, right? And to also, I always believe in hearing people. I also think that there are so many ways that we get input now, that we did not when this policy was originally written. I would say, what do you think, 90% of our comments come through email before a vote is ever held? I'd say that most of the time, I would just really hesitate, and I'm not even sure that it would align with the rest of our policies, or the role of a chair in general, to take away that essentially duty to, to run a meeting, right? And I think, I just don't think it's good policy. I think it's good suggestion, but as a black and white policy, I don't think that I could vote for it. I also think, and I've mentioned this before, and I feel like it's kind of fallen on deaf ears, because it seems like it might be a tough thing to figure out how to do it, but given that all of our public comment, or an enormous amount of our public comment, comes through email, I think that if we are going to embrace a radical transparency, as so many people have said they want, then we need to allow everyone to know what voices are in the room. And I think that there is a huge amount of that lost when we have comments through email, but we do not include them within the public comment of our meetings. And I think that that is, again, a technological reality that we have. You know, because I think sometimes people don't realize that they are not the only person in the room who is saying something, either negative or positive. And I think it might encourage, you know, if people feel as though their voice actually matters, I think a lot of the time when you email, you don't feel like it, it must have fallen on deaf ears, or you get a reply, but there are a lot of people who just don't feel like they can offer their opinion, you know, in person. It's hard, or the way we communicate is different. So I think right now, this is like, a good start, but there are things that we need to tweak to make it a good policy. And I think that as it stands today, I couldn't vote for it. I wouldn't feel okay about leaving the room and saying, okay, this is what I'm leaving somebody with after this. So I may be the only person who feels that way, and I'm willing to hear it, but I just think it needs a little bit more work. So, but I have to say that that is the first time in five and a half years that I just feel like I, I couldn't leave the table with something.
No. Thank you for sharing your reasons why. Now, would anyone like to comment? I, I'm happy to. So, Jess, I, I hear you.
Yeah.
I do, I do, I respect what you have to say. And I suppose, I am very grateful that we are moving towards public comment, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda at the beginning, but I actually, it made me very uncomfortable, to be quite honest, and maybe because it's the committee I came on, it was part of the committee culture to, to listen to folks before a vote, that when we were considering taking it off, I did feel that little nudge, like, ooh, I don't know how this is going to go down, you know, because I do feel, and I feel like in practice, again, this is policy and practice, and I'm trying to meld both, and it is, I don't feel that we get constantly derailed by a discussion before a vote by, by the public, you know, so it's, I don't, I don't foresee it, I don't, I haven't experienced that I can think of, that it just caused so...
You miss some of my meetings?
But still, so this, the way it was, is reworded, for the agenda topics that require a vote, individuals may request. So it doesn't require me to pause, all right, does anyone want to say anything, and the wait to three minutes, you know, so I feel like, okay.
It's a mandate, or is it a mandate? That's the other thing about the policy. Do you still, as chair, have the ability to say, we will not take, you may request it, much like being on the agenda, but we will not be taking comment right now? Because that is an important part, and I think that that's not clarified here.
So, so, a couple items, because I think I'm going to table the discussion around email for...
But it also kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
It changes a lot about what the rest of the policies say.
Okay, because I envision, much like a Scott McDermott, if there's anything, if anything new is going to be stated, please state, but if you're going to be stating the same thing over and over again...
That needs to be put in there.
So, just one second, because I want to...
Yeah, please.
So I'm going to at least table the email conversation for a minute.
Yeah.
And remind, what were the drivers to open it up in the first place? Today, it is still confusing. What we can and can't take public comment on the beginning is a little bit confusing. Is it on the agenda, is it not? I agree with the equity issue, so public access, by allowing us to take comment on any topic at the beginning of the meeting, would open things up. I think it's inefficient that if you're calling public comment for every agenda item, it's not necessarily ideal. And for me, the thing I really am uncomfortable with is the risk of policy violation. And I forgot to bring it up a few minutes ago, but we just voted to accept, who is it, Westborough into the club. We didn't ask, is there public comment before the vote? If that was a vote on something that was, you know, a bigger topic, and we neglected to ask, we violated that policy. I don't know what that means in terms of what we just accepted. And I find that we're doing, there's more legal conversations than I really want to be managing, but that get, that one scares me. We just voted it, you know, something that could have really later impacted it. Say, well, when you voted it, you didn't actually follow your policy. So that's what I really, that's something I just, I don't like the confusion as we've moved chairs in and out. I still get a little confused with current policy. I did feel the same sense of angst that you mentioned, where I don't want to eliminate the right for the public to speak, and at least we said, you know...
It's not the right. It's a privilege.
Correct, yeah.
So you can, correct, we're not mandated to offer public comment. I just think if, I think that would not be a great decision. You know, if I were, if I was championing that cause, I would probably be, you know, I would serve my term. So we are not, but at least modifying it, the intention was, for agenda topics that require a vote and have discussions, that might trigger a need for input. Somebody might say, hey, I've, I've done some research for these eight neighboring districts, and the average salary is X. And maybe that changes how we, see, that's somebody on the committee says that.
Would that come up after?
Somebody on the committee says that, as a part of our discussion. Maybe somebody in the public might say, um, yes, but did you consider X, Y, or Z?
Right.
And it's, I think that's fair, so the...
So what I'm saying is that the chair needs to continue to have some level of autonomy, along with the rest of the committee, to say, okay, let's open, you know, either let's open this up, or are there, like you said with your Scott McDermott statement, would there be anything added to this? Do you have an appreciably different understanding? Is it something, you know, is there any new information here? But does this statement, and that's, does this statement mandate that you take that comment?
So then it says, should this occur, all guidelines for public comment will be maintained? So I think, so should this occur, and that could be a language issue, and it's great we're having the conversation, we couldn't do it until now, as a group.
But that's why I'm saying, you can't vote for it this way.
The intention would be, if a public says, at the beginning of the meeting, hey, I would like, you know, to have the opportunity for public comment, should discussion occur? Thank you, noted, we're obligated to open it up.
That's great.
Or, during that agenda session, they could do that.
I just think you're taking a level of flexibility away.
We are. We are losing, you're giving the authority, you no longer have the, you know, you are saying, if somebody wants to open up public comment, a second time af...
Is that saying you have to? Or are you just allowing them to interject in your meeting? Because that's two different things.
My, go ahead, Chair. I think, because we did talk about this a little bit, we're saying, no, you're obligated.
I've been chair, I've seen four chairs through this time, and it is, it is, it is not always the easiest meeting to run, right? And you, I have seen us get stuck, much like this debate now, but get stuck in a debate that then does not allow us to move the, the needs of the district forward, right?
But that's not because of public input, that's because of our discussions.
No, I've seen it be part of the, the public input at times, but if we're writing policy, we need to be really making sure that we're establishing that there is, that this is the chair's meeting, and you can go to MASC or whatever, as an agent of the, the committee, but your, your, you know, you know this, and I mean this, and one's job in running that is to make sure that you have the flexibility to say, I think we've heard all that we can hear on this one, is there any new information? And, and to be able to say, okay, I'm not opening this up to any more public comment, right? And this, as written, does not allow you that flexibility, allow that, one, that flexibility to do that. It does not allow you to do your job.
See, I don't see it that way. I see it as still allowing me to do that. So how would you...
Discuss this.
Yes, no, exactly, so...
Because I don't see that you have the ability to, I don't know whether you are mandated to open that up, or if you take it as a suggestion. Right now, it says that somebody can raise their hand and say, I want public comment. It does not say whether the chair must do that or not. So if the chair must, then you are mandating that the chair should hand over all judgment, and that is not always the best policy.
So then, if, then the question is, I don't know, I'm sure whether you're, if you agree that the chair should open up public comment, because we just had a discussion, that discussion may have raised, you know, new input that maybe changes Leo's decision.
And I'm not talking about the grand...
And that may or may not be, you know, that, that may have been new information, and there's a counterpoint that I don't have, but somebody in the public has. I'd say, hey, my intention on, with the language, was, yes, they are obligated to open up public comment. They are obligated, so then, and then the language reads...
So that's it, you are obligated to open up public comment, so you are mandating that the chair has to do that.
Right, so should this occur, all guidelines for public comment will be maintained.
But I feel like if the public wants to, and we're allowing it before a vote, I think that's okay, to listen.
That's great, but you, we can go for every single small what-if, what-if, what-if.
Yes.
But this is policy.
Correct.
So I want us to make sure that we know that we are handing over, this is a, this is a business meeting, you know, right? Like, this is about the business of the district, and the people are part of the business of the district. That is absolutely true, and in fact, you're the primary part of that. However, anytime I see something mandated without any sense of judgment, I think that that really takes away something from your ability to have this meeting, to have any meeting, and, and run it as efficiently as, as the, the people who depend on our decisions need us to be, to be as nimble. You know, like, think about many of the discussions that, that we have seen here, where, you know, we're talking about book banning, or, you know, somebody, I'm going to stop calling it book banning, somebody who does not approve of a specific book or whatever, and then, and that was all important feedback, but a lot of it did not add much to the conversation, and it's something that could have been said at the beginning of the meeting, right? Like, it did not add much to the debate. People came, they presented their opinions, and then we go away. Primarily, we often go away and think about it, and then people have time to make their discussions, and they come, time to come at the beginning, they have time. I'm not saying we shouldn't ever open it up, and in fact, I think, as a matter of just general good practice, we do. What I'm saying is that it is not advisable to mandate that it must be opened up from somebody, from the audience, say, I need to talk about this, and then you say, okay, and then...
You need to talk about the item on the agenda. You cannot start talking about...
How are you going to present that? Because with it, or how are you going to prevent that? Because within...
It's, to me, it's clear.
So, look at today's policy, though, are we, are we not taking a step forward? Like, look at today's policy. We are mandated to take it, on every agenda item.
Right, and we don't, and so...
So that's a, I don't understand why we would want to continue to do that. So we're at least taking a step forward and saying, when there's a discussion prior to a vote, we're still offering the public the opportunity to speak.
That's great, and then it's...
Personally, I don't think it's a...
On the item we're voting on.
Mm-hmm, right.
So they can't start talking about, I don't know, parking lots, or what have you.
Right, okay, but that's not exactly how the free speech part of this works anymore, we know that, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we can't evaluate that, literally, like, the decisions that are coming down, we can't evaluate whether that's going to come under the purview of this vote or not. They could just be, they could get there eventually in their three minutes, right? And, but I don't want to go for that. What I'm saying is, I just don't think that it sets a good precedent, because right now, as our, when we talk about enforcing policies, it says that the chair can survey the rest of the committee and choose not to take comment, or choose to change the agenda, right? This takes that flexibility away, to some extent.
Yeah, I suppose, I just, I don't agree, I don't read it that way.
I understand you don't read it that way.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I'm just worried about, you know, this is, policy is meant for, for parsing through to figure out how to...
Yeah, but I also...
Figure out how you did it wrong.
I, I understand that, Jess, and I also, I, you know, I also don't believe that we live in a black and white world, that, but, you know, that this...
But this is black and white.
But the spirit of this, and it's not, it's, it's not saying, no, you know, the school committee chair is relinquishing all power. I don't believe that. I believe that this policy is improving by, by, you know, putting the comments at the beginning, and I do believe personally, and we'll take a vote in just a second, whether or not we're going to change it to also allow the public, before a vote... or not we're going to change it to also allow the public before a vote to, to request to make a comment.
And then the other thing I think is that there's just no.
Just one question, do you have a specific update that you would be comfortable with? Like, is eliminating this whole thing, what, is there a different verbiage?
That the chair is strongly encouraged to allow public comment before votes.
Where, though, like, where on here?
Within here, somewhere, I don't know, I haven't smushed away.
So, because I definitely agree, like, I, I had the same internal debate, should we retain the right of the chair to say, sorry, no, we're not taking it? And, and personally, I eventually came to the conclusion that, I, I don't know that I want to put that at risk, I would rather, like, the chair is obligated to take the public comment that second time after discussion.
Is that so wrong? And to me, it's not.
No, it's not that I feel like it's wrong, and in fact, I think it's right, but I also think that we are writing policy for many, many years, many, many issues, and many, many different iterations in a world that is getting increasingly negative in many ways, and I think that there is an obligation for the chair to, to read the room and understand when new information may actually be given, or when there's, or, or when it will be just kind of a, a reiteration of two opposing sides that want to just get their point again across again, right? Like, and, and that you can, I want the chair to have the ability to say, do you have something new to add to this debate? In a way that, I mean, you don't have to.
Correct, so Jess, I'm trying to, so we understand, I, I think what, I know what you're, I think what you're saying is, should this occur, the chair may choose to open it up for public comment, and all guidelines for public comment will be maintained.
Where the chair is strongly encouraged.
Right, but it doesn't matter, we're playing with words, correct.
Yeah, and that's policy.
It's a, is the chair obligated, or is the chair not?
Right.
And the intention is.
And if you feel fine about having that obligation across the board, that's fine.
I, I think.
Let's not forget that Robert's rules gives the chair a lot of power to run the meeting.
Exactly.
So, like.
But then we don't follow Robert's rules.
So, so like, I look at this, though, I say, worst case scenario, on it, you know, I haven't seen this occur yet, where it's like, there's so much public comment on a vote that we can't, we can't hold it, worst case scenario, it's three minutes per person, 15 minutes, and the chair may choose to elongate that, but I'm saying like.
And I have that right, or any chair would have that right.
Right, so, but I, but I just look at it, like, I do understand and appreciate that the chair is obligated, but the chair sometimes, you know, we are, we are empowered, we are elected, but they may or not be, have been the chair for that long, and like, to take that away from the public, I don't think is a, is a, is a step forward, the right to speak. So, well, we can think about anything, I mean, maybe you poll the group to say, do we want may or shall?
Pulling the audience, the chair may pull the audience, or to.
But then we're going to open up other areas where we may inadvertently violate our own policies, poll the all this audience and how, like, there's, there's.
Is there anything new to be added to this conversation, do you feel, you know, like, would the audience like to speak to the committee upon the debate, right? Or to, you know, like, that there's.
So it would be like to vote to address any new discussion items, would that?
I know, I'm trying, I'm trying to, to, for agenda topics that require a vote, individuals may request to open up public comment.
To be a hard ask.
No, I'm not, I'm understanding.
To look at things, really, to really look at them.
And I'm not, I'm not also being, I'm saying, are you advocating for may?
I'm, I am advocating for, for a strong suggestion that the chair should, but does not have to.
Correct, you're, that's, that's okay, that, that's okay, I, I, I've went into that, I've, I've held both ways, I eventually landed, and then just bringing forward to the committee is, I would rather, I would rather not learn the information from, you know, Michelle about those 12 school districts, that, that's helpful and changes my vote, and the public says, no, no, wait a minute, there's something else that you don't know, give them the opportunity to share that, so that I, that's all I'm saying, is it, it opens it up, then the chair is saying, nope, no more from the public.
But that's not what we're saying, we're saying.
Three minutes per individual, and 15 minutes total, I don't think that's a huge risk.
So, so can I just?
Strongly suggested.
Can, okay, so Jess, what you're getting at.
But that means they could still say, sorry, we don't want to do that, because it says strongly suggested, so why bother? Like, I do understand where you're vague, there are plenty of places where policy is vague. Yeah, where it's vague, great, but I don't love the fact that it's confusing, I don't love the fact that public may, as it stands today, they may have to wait until that agenda comes up, I, I don't like the fact that today, there's, maybe policy violation.
No, no, what I'm saying is that I, I think it just needs another iteration, right?
So, but, but your other iteration is, is it the discretion of the chair, or is it not the discretion of the chair? I, I'm all for this discussion, but we're three quarters of the way through it, let's finish it, because.
But this only got added last meeting.
Correct, it was added last meeting, so let's hear from everybody on the floor here, would you prefer it to be the discretion of the chair, or discretion of the obligation?
Well, I think that there's, there's a couple of, of issues, I think that there, that the chair can call, or may allow for, for comment before a vote, but.
Plug in the computer.
But at the same time, it again gets us to that point where, you know, is it, is it only if you have the stamina to sit through three hours of a meeting that you, you know, like, get to provide your second comment on that? But what I'm really saying, I can manage this.
In a town meeting, eventually, you may have the stamina, you have to stick with it in order to vote, it's not, I don't love it, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, I don't love it, but I think it's eventually going to go the way of the dinosaur, but in any case, we don't, we are obviously not down meeting here. I could agree that if we were to say that the, the chair is strongly encouraged, but is not obligated to open, or.
I suppose.
I mean, however we want to wordsmith that.
Yeah, all right.
I understand that, I understand.
And I also think, and I'm going to push the second part, I really think that it, whether it's in a procedure, or whether it's in this policy, that we include all public comment, including emails.
I think that's a totally, I, I thank you for bringing that up again, but we can't.
Because I think that we're just not following, but we're about to go in procedure here, right?
Yeah.
So we're, we're talking about kind of like dinosaurs, like, the person who shows up and says, I'm going to talk into this microphone, or I'm going to come over on Zoom, but our public input is far more wide-ranging, far more comprehensive, and far more electronic than that.
Okay, but I don't think we're prepared right now to really delve into whether or not we are going to release emails. I think we need to consult MASC, I, I think we need to consult council, I, because that's a bigger deal.
There's no obligation for privacy with emails unless we bring exact information.
I know, but I just want to be thoughtful about it, and make sure we cover our bases, and, you know, that is advertised.
I think that if we're going to, if we are doing policy with an eye towards what the, what people say they want, which is transparency, then when we release, like, when we release things with public records, everybody gets to know that information, not just the one or two people who have requested it.
Right.
Like, when we have a debate on a matter, I guarantee you, the people out there, if they're watching, they only hear the, the people who have chosen to speak on the issue, but have not seen their peers' full range of concerns about it, right? But that's where we get the most public input. So I understand that you don't necessarily feel like it should be put into this policy, I do think it should be put into the procedures, if we're going to put a procedure and vote on a procedural thing, right? If we're voting on a document that's about procedures, then I think that we should really seriously consider.
Okay, what I'd like to propose is that if, if you can come up with the wording, and, and then we will postpone this vote to the next meeting, and.
So, so before, before we do the wording, though, like, I don't mean, I guess.
Yeah, because right.
The only thing I'm saying is, we're all here talking about it.
Yeah, I know.
I know you can, you can wordsmith.
So the public's on there.
You can wordsmith strongly encouraged, like, I, I at least, I can, I, I thought about that, I at least talked about it, strongly encouraged, no matter how you wordsmith it, eventually, it is the authority of the chair to say, we will not take public comment after that discussion, because it's, it's may, you could wordsmith it, but it is the authority. And the current policy says it's an obli, the way it's written says.
It's an obligation for everything.
If somebody asks for that, it is, if they ask, right, somebody does have to ask, so it.
No, actually, we're supposed to stop and take public comment.
On the current state, correct.
Yeah, on the.
As the new policy is written.
This new policy, they have to ask, but so could we?
They have to ask, but they're not asking, they're flagging.
Could we, could we consider if there is new information?
And that, that can be part of the, I can wordsmith it any way we want to, if that is what the committee wants, I simply want us to pause and say, does this need to be a mandate? Or is this strongly encouraged? Yeah, strongly encouraged.
I, okay.
As part of the policy.
All right, I suppose I totally read this differently than you do, but I respect how you're reading it, so I want to make sure that we're on, on the same page, because, so I do think it's nearly 10 o'clock, and I think we're going in circles right now, so I think if we can have some proposed language that we can consider for the next meeting, I think we should consider it then.
So, so I feel okay about me, and I would.
So what does the committee feel, do they feel may, or do they feel strongly encouraged?
I say strongly encouraged.
I think so, too, I think that it should be.
Hold on, hold on, timeout, timeout, timeout.
I like it the way it is.
May, strongly encouraged, or obligated, those are very loose terms. Obligated is binary.
That's interpretation.
Yeah, obligated in my eyes is will, should this occur, the, the chair will open it up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's that, I just want to, like, I want to be specific, very clear, I, I, the intention that I think, and it does, you know, it, it models the current policy, that we are obligated.
But that was, that was a burden that we were trying to get.
So, I go back, there's, there's.
To try and make more efficient.
I think it should be new information.
The current policy is confusing to me.
Yes.
Should be new information up to the chair.
Right, it doesn't, the public access, they cannot even speak to it until that agenda item came up.
Right, no, it's awful.
And there's risk of policy violation if the chair forgets to open it up, so I'm saying it's at least a step forward while still retaining the public's right to speak after discussion and prior to a vote, as the way the policy is written.
And I am not arguing that at all, except in how, again, I think, I think maybe we should just kind of back off on this, because I think that.
Obligated, or do you want may?
I'm not saying may, I'm saying strongly encouraged, but. Because you're allowing.
What is wrong with taking public comment if it's new information?
Well, that's the thing, if it's new information, that's, that's great, if we feel like that is the best way to do it, I did not come up with new information, you guys came up with new information, and that's gone.
I just, okay, and then we got to close this, because we really need to wrap this up, and we can kind of think about this on our, on our own and discuss it the next meeting, but I also want to, to look at, again, how we practice this, and how we practice this is we do not get into constant, I think, I don't believe that we get derailed before a vote, except for now, which is fine, this is amongst committee, this is good discussion.
This is deliberation, this is what we're supposed to do.
Correct, yes, but I, I don't think we get derailed before a vote, of my nine years, I just, I can't think about it, so I.
Then why are we changing it all?
Oh, because of what Tim said, we are, the beginning portion.
The beginning portion, I love the beginning portion.
Exactly, so, and I also.
But I don't, I don't, also, when you do the beginning portion, where you can allow people to comment on anything.
Again, we're going in circles.
We are in circles, but like, so, so we can propose the language, we're going to wind up having this same conversation.
Yes, and then we will have to just take a vote, and then.
So if you want to just take a vote, take a vote, but I know that, I feel like it, I just have a sense that it should be strongly encouraged.
I'm strongly encouraging we move on.
Yeah, so I, I think we'll give this, we'll give this another.
I often dig my heels in on this.
No, no, that's fine, but what I'm proposing.
The only thing I would ask, though, as we're having a conversation, Michelle or Leo, do you have, do you have an opinion on it? Because, so we don't have to start from ground zero, that's the only reason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm clear with what I'm suggesting, I understand where you're taking input.
I, I feel like I've, I've been reading it, I think, more similar to how Anna May's been reading it, and I think that it, you know, I think there's, there's, no matter how much you wordsmith this, there's always going to be room for interpretation, right? And I think the idea behind this, the way we have it now, is the onus is on the individuals to request that, right? So when we talk about policy violation, it's not on the chair anymore, right? But in that same space, it would be up to the chair a little bit from an interpretation standpoint, on how they're going to run this piece when they get to a vote. I would hope personally, that if there's all of a sudden a bunch of new information, and we have 15 people standing up, we all take a step back and decide to maybe table that for a deeper discussion.
Yeah.
So I guess I just feel like when we're looking at the different what-ifs and scenarios here, right, like, you are looking at, like, new information, you're looking at reiterating what somebody already said, or you're looking at, like, the masses suddenly showing up, which, again, I know I'm the new guy here, but I got.
I've seen it.
But I guess I'm saying, like, for a potential vote situation, and then, you know, how do you handle that, right? Like, and so I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with the wording that we have here right now, because I do think that it's progress forward on how we want to be doing and running our meetings, which we've been talking about for a very long time.
So, so when we're talking about votes, I mean, we vote on a lot of things, right? We vote on minutes, we vote on things that are kind of essentially.
Donations.
Donations, stuff like that.
Yes.
So, so maybe when we talk about votes, we also think about how we run our agenda. I could be comfortable with this if I thought about how we run our agenda, and we think about doing consent vote for a lot of that stuff, which shortens our meetings.
Oh, that's interesting, yep.
And kind of removes that obligation once again, here, we're obligated, every time we have a vote, to kind of, you know, look after the audience, see, you know? And I guess that that's kind of one of the other things, is that it seems a little bit, if somebody just stands up and flags you down, we're going to open that up, but I think it needs to be a little more formalized, too, like, does the chair need to survey the audience, is there any?
So, wait, so we, now we have to write that, we have to write that in the policy.
Then there's, there's the interpretation of what those words mean.
Well, I'm just saying, there's a lot, it's interesting how there's a lot to discuss here, and we say that we think it's so clear, but, you know, sometimes we just think of things.
I also like to think common sense will prevail.
And that's where I add, in the most circular fashion, common sense will prevail by the chair being able to read the room and see, you know, strongly encourage as a matter of practice to ask.
All right, so let us close this now, and we'll.
I mean, if the rest of the committee is, is happy to vote on this.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't have, I don't want to, I don't want to be the guy who's, like, just arguing for no good reason, this has been my concern about this, but if the rest of the committee is, is perfectly. But if the rest of the committee is perfectly fine on this policy, then I say bring it to a vote.
Okay.
I just don't think I could vote for it right now.
Okay, that's fair. Leo, what is your comfortability level?
I didn't see it, I saw it the way Michelle saw it.
I know, I have a different way of looking at things sometimes, but-
If you, people would feel more comfortable waiting another, to the next meeting, that's fine too, but-
I mean, would it be any different? I don't think it'd be any different.
I wasn't saying that, don't table it. I was just saying, we're having a lot of conversation on this side of the table, I'd love to hear opinions over there.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly.
I don't, I don't have a-
You know, if the four members of the committee see it differently than I do, then I recommend we bring it to a vote. And if I say nay, I'd say nay.
Yeah, that's okay too, yeah, absolutely.
It's perfectly okay, and we get a lot of flack for agreeing all the time and I'd like to take my moment.
But I also want to, I want, I'm sitting with this, so-
Because once it's policy, it's policy and it's cool. All right, good. I just need to be able to say that I'm, we need to make sure that we're making-
No, this was, yeah, yeah.
All directions.
Very good. All right, so are we comfortable voting? Because I am.
I think before we, if we were to take a vote, before we are, we are obligated to take public comment.
Exactly, yes.
There you go.
Our one person, Chris.
Yeah, let me just see if there's anything out there.
She outlasted it and waited, so now she gets the input.
Lord. Thank you for this discussion. Chris Potts, I'm sure. I would like to address just a couple of things. I think that the suggestion of having a consent agenda is a fantastic one. I think that is, I've looked at other agendas and I've looked at what mass association school committees recommends, I think that would be a fantastic idea to make your own mission be this vision. I would also say that in conversations that I've had with various people who actually want for mass association of school committees over the years, probably the biggest question that I get from people in the community is, so what happens if a school committee does not follow their own policy? And what I've been told universally is unless somebody wants to file a lawsuit against something that is truly illegal because the policy is based on a law, there's really nothing, there's really no harm that you guys are going to face by not following your own policy. So at the end of the day, if you're at a meeting and you want a public comment after a vote, or your policy says you're going to up a public comment after a vote and you don't do it, there's really no repercussions on you. And at the end of the day, the law does say that the chair has discretion. So at the end of the day, the chair, that law does in fact hold it. So I wouldn't worry so much about if you change this policy, which I really like the new wording that's in there, that if the comment isn't taken for some reason, I don't think you have to really worry about any repercussions. Because at the end of the day, the law about the chair having discretion is going to, is going to govern your actions. So, and I just also feel like from an equity standpoint, that, you know, the moment that we stopped taking comments via Zoom, which we had done for the longest time, that in itself was an equity issue because people couldn't physically come to a meeting to make public comment. So I just think that it's just, I like the change and I would really, I support you guys in making that simple change to the board votes.
Okay, thank you.
And I hope that's moved the motion.
Yeah. All right, well then, let's take that vote.
Let me read it one more time.
Okay.
And the, point of clarity, I think at this stage, it's B E D H exclusively.
Correct, we are, yes.
The B E D H E, just bring that back.
Another vote, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and with the open-
Oh, do you want to check Zoom if there are any?
I've checked, so far I don't see anything.
Okay. All right, so it would read, the new lingo is for agenda topics that require a vote, individuals may request to open up public comment after discussion and prior to the vote to address any discussion items which may have occurred amongst the school committee. Should this occur, all guidelines for public comment will be maintained. So as B E D H is written with the change that I have just read, do we have a motion to approve policy B E D H?
So moved, Tim.
Tim, so moved. Do we have a second?
Second, Leo Brem.
Second, Leo Brem, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? All right, it passes, thank you.
I'm glad we had this conversation. I'm sorry it took so long.
That's all right, that's, no, that's good, it's good.
I think it's a healthy conversation.
To me, it's an important term.
And it's tough because we can't meet outside of here to really-
Yeah, exactly, you're right, you're right.
Get all gnarly about it. But I just wanted to make sure that we really knew what it was we were doing and if we can get that consent agenda-
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
That's a way that we can do that and just make it much more efficient.
Jeff and I have talked about that before.
Let's get those parts of the meeting over with, make it less complicated and move on.
Okay, beautiful. So, the proposal for B E D H dash E, do we have any comment, comments from school committee there, comments in the public? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve B E D H dash E?
So moved. My only, B E D H E, the way it reads right now, it's still-
The superintendent.
It says the superintendent or the chair.
Can we-
Oh, I thought you, we have an amendment.
I would like to clarify.
Okay, please.
Yeah, if we wanted to clarify, as it's written-
We could strike it.
And striking the superintendent. I think that was what I heard-
I think that's reasonable.
That everybody, that, I don't want to, or at least that I heard, that I was, I prefer that, striking the superintendent. Also, it was helpful to hear the feedback.
I'll amend my motion to the striking of, the language, but the striking of the superintendent.
Thank you, Leo.
So Jeff, if someone emails or you're just going to forward it onto the chair or you're going to tell the person to email the chair?
He's just going to delete it.
You can't delete it.
Forward to the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that way it gets, you know, forward, but that's just-
Again, no one sends me anything, so if they do in the future, or future superintendents, tell them.
You almost sound sad that no one sends you anything.
Not sad at all.
I don't like to say that. That's not really why I'm not getting that offer, Jeff, right now.
Yeah, so you want to read the-
Oh, it would be amended.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
So the first three paragraphs would be the same. It's a long policy.
No, just the part where we're-
Such requests should be in writing and should be received by the chair of the school, chair of the committee at least two weeks prior to the date of the meeting.
So the only thing there is that the superintendent of schools has been struck.
Yeah, that, that's a simple amendment.
Yes, such requests should be, again, in writing and should be received-
By the chair.
By the-
Chair of the committee.
Chair of the committee at least two weeks prior to the date of the meeting.
Yes, and not the superintendent. Okay, so with that change of-
Take public comment on that one.
Yeah.
So my question is, does the policy, does B E D H E still allow for a superintendent of schools to dictate what's on the school committee agenda and where and how it appears?
Okay, so there is-
The next sentence says, such requests should be contained background statements which would explain the scope and intent of the agenda. The chair of the committee works with the superintendent to formulate the meeting agendas.
And that is through multiple policies, through multiple-
Why don't we post all this stuff? We have to keep reading it all the time. Can we post all this online for everyone to see?
I don't know that, I didn't see B E D H E.
No, here's the line that, here's the line that I'm questioning. Together, they, together, meaning the chair and the superintendent, will determine whether or not to place an item on the agenda and if the agenda, and if the item is to be taken up, they will also determine when to place an item on the agenda and all parameters required of the present agenda. I will argue that that particular sentence is the role of the school committee chair and that is what the mass, that's what the mass association model policy specifically states.
I might argue that.
I'm okay with the way it's written.
We are using the MASC policy-
Yeah.
But we also have to adhere to our own policies along the way.
Yeah, and in practice, again, it's always with the chair and the superintendent.
Because the superintendent brings to the chair the business of the district that must be addressed.
Yes.
Then the chair also contributes the business of the committee that would need to be addressed.
That's how it works everywhere.
It is, it's how it works. It's just two people working together as coworkers, bringing and efficiently bringing the business of the district.
The wording that is problematic is not whether or not a chair and a superintendent collaborate, that is understood, that is understood that that is necessary and important. The problematic line is, together they will determine whether or not to place an item on the agenda.
And the word there is-
Together.
Whether or not, if a citizen comes to school committee and says, I would like consideration of an item on the agenda. If any member of the school, other member of the school committee goes to the chair and says, I would like to place an item on the agenda, the chair should have full discretion. There should not be, there should not be any ability for any superintendent to have a say on whether or not that item appears on the agenda. That is a school committee role.
I disagree.
Unless it's a personnel issue, right? A personnel issue.
The role of the chair in the mass association of school committee document, that is stated explicitly.
So again, I don't care because I don't want more to do. I really don't care, but I would say that if there's an issue around personnel and you have a, you have a chair that doesn't know about certain things like that, then the superintendent should have a voice in that, but again-
Absolutely, that's just what it is.
And I think-
What you're saying, Chris, doesn't allow that.
And I think the key word there is together.
Together.
So if Jeff wanted to take something off and I wanted it on-
Oh, and trust me, that has happened plenty.
Like, there is some of those-
I think I win.
I have many discussions with Jeff where it's like, he's like, I don't know.
And it's on because you're the chair of the school committee.
Right.
Correct.
That power is not taken away.
That's not-
All right, so do you want to restate?
Motion to approve as amended.
With the strike, yes.
With the striking.
Of superintendent as we read before.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
A second, Tim.
Second, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay, great, thank you. Strategic plan timeline, very high level.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, so our phase one is still unscheduled to begin on, in April of 2023, and that's collection of documents and document review. Phase two is when they start doing the meetings in the focus groups in the community, so that will start happening late April and go through June, and then the phase three is the writing of the plan. We're still on board and on target for that to be done at the end of June 2023. So all full steam ahead on that. Timeline is still what it was in November and we're looking forward to that process.
Very good.
But the first part, what was the first date?
April.
And then I just think we want to think about how we get, keep the public informed and try to get them to participate.
We'll start to discuss focus groups and dates.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we'll do what we did last time. We did a lot of reach out there, we did-
Sandwich boards.
Sandwich boards to get folks that aren't parents involved, we did a lot.
Really nice.
Yeah.
Very populated.
Yeah, no, they were very well attended, people want to come.
Yeah.
Donations, do we have any?
We have a couple donations.
Oh, a big one.
I ask you to approve the following donations, $15,000 from Medfield Foundation of Education. I don't think that's supposed to be a Medfield Foundation. Is that correct? Is that correct?
That's what the picture looks like.
I think it's Medfield Foundation, I don't think it's Medfield Foundation of Education. Hold on a second, I got it right here. Medfield Foundation, yes, not Foundation of Education. So, $15,000 from Medfield Foundation to district gift account, and that's for the interface. So that was what we talked about during the budget, we half of it. And then the other piece is $2,682.32 from Brandon Barrett to Blake Middle School gift account. I ask you to approve as presented. So moved.
So moved. Michelle Kirkby, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Leo Brem, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great, thank you. Thank you for the donations. Any informational items?
Just in your materials, there's the tech annual report.
Yes, okay.
So please take, please take a look at that.
Wonderful. And our future agenda item is the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey results, and those folks will come February 13th now, correct?
Date was fine with them, yes.
Okay, good, great. So next meeting, February 13th, do we-
Monday?
A Monday.